Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
We're opening with the county commissioners meeting, so I'm going to turn it over to Malcolm McNabb.
Okay, welcome everyone. The September 27th meeting of the Nantucket County Commissioners is now open. And just to remind you all that this meeting is being audio and visually recorded. Are there any public comments and any issues for the county not on the agenda? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes and warrants. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman says aye, theirs are approved. We really have one item of business tonight. There is no new business I know of. A planning board request for the county to acquire Clay Street for future pedestrian and/or vehicle connection to area roads as outlined in condition five of the Clay Street subdivision approval. So I'd maybe ask Leslie to explain this to us and then Vicki, any legal issues?
Thank you, County Commissioners, I'm Leslie Snell, the Director of Planning. Back in 2016, the planning board approved the Clay Street subdivision off of Skyline Drive. There's a roadway that's part of that subdivision known as Clay Street. About three quarters of the roadway is laid out as a road. There's a section at the end that was reserved for a future easement to connect the Skyline Drive and Surfside area neighborhood through to Richmond. The planning board thought that was a very important easement to reserve for a future either vehicular, pedestrian, or bicycle connection. The request tonight is for the county commissioners to execute condition five of that condition and to reach out to the property owner to offer part of the road to the county as a fee simple transfer and part of it as an easement towards the end. This request would not require any immediate action in terms of opening up the road. In fact, that couldn't happen until neighboring roadways that are currently private become public. So right now, this is just, you know, setting the sage, excuse me, setting the stage for a potential future action.
Thank you. Vicki, comments?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. No, I concur with Leslie's present, you know, opening remarks on this matter. All that you're being asked to do this evening is to actually vote to authorize a letter to be executed and delivered to the current owner of the property, requesting that he grant grant the fee simple title to the town or, and in this case, the county, and also grant an easement over a portion of Clay Street.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions about what we're being asked to do? Any questions? Comments?
I think we probably will. I think we have a bunch of letters.
Yes, I was gonna say.
Concerns.
I have some concerns and I think we should hear them.
Yep. And well, first thing before we go to those, a question for Leslie, the was the conditions, like there was condition one, two, and three, were those all? You know, did the, you know, applicant had to have a final plan within six months was? And then number two, the improvements had to be done within six months. Number three, the building had to demolish to move within two years. Were all those conditions met for this?
So for condition one, the final plans were approved by the planning board. Those have been recorded at the registry. Condition two, all of the improvements were completed. We have an ASBIL on file with the planning board showing what was constructed. And three, it's my understanding that the single-family dwelling has been demolished.
Yeah, so those all were done. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? We did have some public comment. If anyone would please speak. We got three letters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Arthur Gasparo. Full disclosure, my wife owns 48 Skyline Drive, which abuts Clay Street. As many of you may know, I'm a local land surveyor and civil engineer. And would just like to offer some, some comments and thoughts with respect to the proposed action tonight. I think that it shouldn't be taken lightly. There was a lot of discussion. I participated in the hearings back in 2016 and have tracked this matter since. I think that it would be highly unusual to have Clay Street, the portion as shown on the plan as a public road. It essentially would be a floating public road between private roads if you were to take the the fee in that. And I think that there are some other alternatives that the county commission could consider at this time and before you make the, the actual request to the owner. And so I think that at a minimum, further study would be required to determine what alternatives may be in the best interest of the, of the county, the town, and the neighborhood. And specifically, as I say, Clay Street as shown on the plan for those two lots, if you were to take the fee in that, it would connect to Skyline Drive and essentially be a 40-foot by, I can say it's 500 feet or something, long floating public road. And with the town responsible for the maintenance of that road because it's going to be a public road. And I don't know that that's really necessary at this point. Further, the proposed easement at the end of that road, which would connect over to Richmond, would bifurcate number 44, Skyline Drive, thereby creating, it's a two-acre, log two, 80,000-square-foot district. That lot's currently about 81,000 square feet. It would divide that lot and make it into two buildable lots under essentially the, the, what's called the grandfather pre-existing non-conforming use statute of the code, chapter 139, 33E. And so I think the county commission should be aware that the action that they take doing that is in fact going to, going to have that effect. And I think that there is a greater, a bigger picture to be considered here. If you are going to essentially set the stage, as you say, for a future action of an exit from Richmond, exit, you know, ingress or regress to that entire subdivision through the Skyline neighborhood, Webster Road, those roads, as noted, are private. And, you know, it's a, it's a much bigger question to happen at a future time. And I think that that's when the taking of Clay Street and the, and easements and connectivity should occur is not in a vacuum right now, just because of this one decision. I think it's great that the planning board was considering that as an option, but ultimately it's up to, it's up to this board and this commission to make that decision. And they've fulfilled their requirements of the, essentially the, the conditions by, by, you know, asking that, you know, it, it's, it's subject to you asking. So this would be in progress for discussion. Nothing further has to happen. And further to that, in the decision, if you go to item number five, which had been included in your packet, I think of utmost importance is the last sentence, which I'll be as brief as possible, Mr. Chair, but I think this is an important matter, that no additional compensation shall be due from the applicant or its successors, assigns to the town in Nantucket or vice versa, in the event that Clay Street is offered, dedicated, conveyed, or otherwise acquired for public benefit. To me, what that says is you could do this in the future at any point. And when you do, you're not faced with some kind of a compensation issue with the taking. So there's really no reason to, that this has to be done promptly or has to be done now. It should be not be done in a vacuum. And the public's best interest in the neighborhood is going to be best preserved by considering all of those roads and all of those impacts together. And so my request to you would be to, to take no action on this item. And I'll sit down, but certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've got a question for Vicki, if that's all right.
There is someone with their hand up on the line.
Then someone else can go.
You have a hand up?
Campbell Sutton has her hand up.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I, I just had a question. Because I know that there is on the special town meeting warrant, there's an article for funding for the streets in question here, Lovers Lane, Orcoa, Skyline. Improvements, I believe, also for water and sewer, but improvements to those roads. Will that constitute the change from private roads to public roads when that occurs? And the reason I ask is I know there has been expressed over the years, a lot of concern for people in the Skyline area about Richmond development. Where Skyline pretty much becomes a secondary old south road sort of way to get out of having to go down Old South Road and the amount of traffic, et cetera, that would occur. So I was just sort of wondering, is the article that's coming up, approval of that article is, is that the same as also approving them to become public rather than private roads?
Yes.
I can answer that. The easement in question that, or the easements in question that are being asked to be taken do not constitute a take, any kind of taking in fee. The roads that are private right now will remain private. It's just giving the water company because it's not sewer. It's just water. The ability to construct, maintain and the water main in those areas. Some of the easements being taken are also just along the private roads, but just giving it a little bit more of a buffer for drainage purposes. So that's all the intent there is.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands up?
Yeah, Malcolm, for Vicki, what triggers the subdivision visibility issue? If it was a easement for a bike path in a walking lane, would that trigger it? Or is it the fee simple taking that triggers it?
Are you, are you asking that whether what triggers it is the fact that there, the, well, let me just back up. The condition that's in this subdivision approval is just for either a conveyance of a portion of Clay Street in fee simple and/or the easement. And so I'm not sure whether you're looking as to what triggers the acquisition.
No, not the acquisition. My understanding, Leslie may have to explain it for us, but my understanding is that this is, we put a, a public road in between and an 80,000-square-foot lot that could have, you know, two or three dwellings on it and cover it off, is the buildability is doubled. It'll be a pre-existing, non-conforming, but each side of the road will be able to do the same amount. So is that triggered when we take the fee simple? Or is that triggered, you know, even with an easement down the middle?
So, um, first of all, that, that portion where Lot A1, it's bounded on the, bounded by the roadway easement. It's not bounded at the Clay Street portion. And so if they were going to take, if you were going to acquire that road in fee simple, that would trigger. Oh, here. So I'm just waiting for this plan to come up. So if, if you're going to be acquiring, for instance, just the easement portion and then, and as well as the Clay Street fee portion, then this would, this action, first of all, you'd have to have a vote to actually accept this road and a vote to accept the easement. And so when those votes are taken and accepted at that point in time, and the recording of those documents, then these become actually public ways. And so therefore, Lot A1, at that point in time, becomes bifurcated. Does that answer your question?
A lot with two, with a lot on either side of the road, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so what, and if instead of taking a fee simple road, what if we just took an easement for bikes and pedestrians right now? Does that trigger this subdivision?
Um, I have to look at the definition of the zoning bylaw to see if the street would apply just to a bike path or not. If it does, then yes, if you took just the easement in Clay Street and created just a bike path, then that would still create the bifurcation. But if the definition in the zoning bylaw does not requires more than just a bike path, then it would not create the bifurcation. Does that answer your question?
Vicki, the reason I'm asking the question is I'm thinking, what if we just take a, because we don't want to, eventually, we're going to fix some of these roads and we're going to want to connect some things, but not right now. Yes. But we don't want to have a bunch of buildings built here and then we lose the opportunity. So I'm thinking, what if we took an easement? As long as it didn't, you know, trigger the buildability, you know, take and take the easement, have, and then that will preclude something from happening where maybe we'll have a road in 20 years, 30 years. So I'm, I'm looking at it that way, but I don't want to, you know, and if we said, hey, we'll take it for this purpose and, you know, and plea, and ask the owner to at some point to keep this in place for a longer period. Because it's going to be to their advantage when it is triggered because they're going to get twice as much building. So anyway.
The one question that I, I think I would have for, perhaps for Leslie, I would defer to her in the planning department, is was there a reason that they were trying to acquire this portion of Clay Street in fee simple title and the other portion as an easement? And would it be a problem for the planning department and from planning purposes to just have an easement there?
So for you, I, my recollection at the time is that the property owner that the planning board was working with did not want to convey via easement. They wanted to convey via fee simple for the Clay Street portion that's already laid out. So that's why that language was in there. But I don't think that, you know, changing that from fee simple to easement would really make a difference to the planning board. It would still accomplish the same results at the end of the day. You know, the reason why the, the, the term in itself that's not laid out that we're talking about specifically via easement was done, the way that was done was so that if, you know, the county or town decided to not move forward with some kind of connection, that they would have the one lot preserved and not have a road cutting through. If I can just touch on the development potential of one lot versus two. The lot is just about 80,000 square feet, which would allow about 3,200 square feet of ground cover. Even if it was divided into two, it would be about the same amount. So there's not a ground cover increase there. If anything, it's probably a little bit of a decrease. And the lot is not in the sewer district. There's no sewer. Water, I think, would probably be available because of the recent connections in the area. But there's not a lot of development potential when you're talking about the ground cover that's allowed, whether it's one lot or two lots. You know, the, the number of dwellings may be increased, but the ground cover doesn't really change.
Go right ahead, please.
Um, so if I, if I understand, the easement would make it so that the lot would now not be subdivided. But was that the deal with the property owner? And that's why that language was fee simple? Did they only allow it because they were going to get a subdivision?
So the current owner of the property is not the owner that we dealt with back in 2016. So I think that's a really important point to make, that this isn't any sort of deal between the planning board and the current property owner. I mean, this was specifically contemplated by the planning board in order to connect roadways in the future if the town and county wanted to do that. So the fact that, you know, laying the last section out creates two lots is just a result of having that connection. And whether it's done via easement or done via fee simple, it still divides the lot into two by a street as defined in our zoning by law, which is a public way. So I think the question that was posed to Vicki is one that may need more research is if it's only dedicated to a bike path or a pedestrian connection, does that still make it a public way? Which by our definition in zoning would make it a street, which would then divide the lot into two. So that's a detail that may need more exploration, if that's a concern of the commissioners.
Okay. Mark, you stood up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a quick follow-up to, to items that I failed to mention that I believe are relevant is that, you know, the letter that you got was based on a planning board discussion back in July, which did only contemplate the easement and not the fee taking. And so I don't think that that means you have to take one direction or another. But I had also attended that meeting and didn't say anything then on the basis that the agenda item in the discussion was on it being an easement. I believe to your question about the fee and the other easement, I think there was a lot of concern from the public at the time, the Skyline neighborhood, when that subdivision was being done and the creation of that layout of Clay Street, that there not be a full connection. And so the easement was viewed as, I don't want to say springing, but an ability to not have a complete connection of a layout. In fact, I don't know that it's all that different, but I think that was my sense of having been participating then. The layout that you see there is as shown lots, I think it's, I can't quite read it from here, even with my glasses, C, C two and three, maybe, that make out, make up the Clay Street layout, provide frontage to that back lot A1. So that's, that's what I think is the reason that, that it extends and stops where it is. It's so that on that south side, the frontage along that one contiguous line is 151 feet where, in a district that requires 150 feet. So that's, that's why it is as long as it is and why it stops where it is. And I think that the conveyance, i- if you didn't accept the fee in Clay Street, it would just remain a private road, just like Skyline and all the other, you know, sort of, sort of private roads. It's, it's a way approved by the planning board that's providing frontage to that, to that back lot. So it remains a private road. I do appreciate the input from both the plan director and council in terms of is a potential, you know, solution that if, if the easement was only for bicycle and pedestrian purposes over the entire layout, does that essentially accomplish what you hope to? It keeps anything from getting built in that area? It allows for a pedestrian connection, but yet doesn't actually trigger the, you know, the provisions of pre-existing, non-conforming use. And I would certainly, you know, hope that at a minimum, you, you may consider continuing the matter for additional information. And the last point that I would make is out of Richmond, there is another alternative exit to the, you know, Ironwood or, you know, I think, believe that's the name of their road that exits to Old South, and that's to Dave Kim, to Lovers Lane, which is scheduled to, you know, be improved. So there is already another using an existing layout and existing road, though those are subject to, you know, improvement. So again, I do thank you for your time and consideration of this matter.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
May I make a motion that we hold for Vicki to research having the easement be bicycle pedestrian only?
I'll second that.
Before we make a decision.
Any further discussion? That's a, that's a great motion, I think. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chairman says aye. All right. Any comments from the commissioners? Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay, we will open the September 27th Select Board meeting at 5:54. We'll accept the agenda as written and move to announcements.
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have openings on the Town Council Study Committee and applications are due for that committee on Monday, October 2nd at noon. The warrant is open for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting, which starts on Tuesday, May 7th, for citizen warrant article submittals through November 13th at four. And please remember, you need the signatures of at least 10 registered voters. We have Town Council lined up to be available for consultation with citizens who may be contemplating a warrant article. Those sessions are on Tuesday, October 3rd from 2:00 to 4:00, and Wednesday, October 4th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., both via Zoom. And you can email the town manager at nantucket-ma.gov for Zoom links. We have some informational sessions coming up on the November 7th, 2023 Special Town Meeting Short Term Rental Articles. Those sessions are on Thursday, October 5th at 4:30 and Thursday, October 12th at 5:30. All on Zoom and registration information is on the Select Board's agenda and on the town website. And I think we have one, oh, we're going to do that under New Business, the sewer request, but we'll do that under, under New Business.
New Business, okay.
David, we'll, we'll do your thing under New Business, okay?
Are there any opening Select Board announcements or comments? Okay. I don't believe there's any follow-up from prior meetings. Is there any public comment for items not on our agenda tonight for discussion? I do, online.
Hello?
Anne, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. Hi, Anne, US 5 Mill Street. Regarding your last announcement about the informational sessions on October 5th and 12th, can you tell us who will be involved in those informational sessions? What people will be there to answer questions or give advice or whatever? Thank you.
Yes, we will have something of a panel, which will have Town Council on it. A couple of members of the Finance Committee, some members of the former Short Term Rental Work Group, and our moderator will be Brooke Moore. And we hope that people will call in and ask questions about questions they might have about the articles and the Finance Committee motions, which just got adopted yesterday.
Campbell Sutton?
Good evening. I had a bit of a question, I think. Last, at last week's meeting, it was voted to turn more than 50% of the units at 31 Fairgrounds, and I believe somewhere in the neighborhood of 39 units at Surfside Crossing to municipal employee rentals only. And I guess I'm, I was a little disturbed by it myself because I know quite a few people that are looking for and have been counting on these developing affordable units to be available. And it sounds like, you know, the majority of them are going to go to the town, and the town is also building Tacoma Green. And I'm just wondering if there's, you know, a plan in place for all the other people that need housing, equally need housing? Is, is there a plan in place for how to deal with the loss to the entire community? Or I guess maybe everyone should work for the town and get housing, which should be lovely as well. But, so I, I guess I was just taken a little aback by that, given that, you know, tens of millions that But so I, I guess I was just taken a little aback by that, given that, you know, tens of millions that voters have given to the affordable housing issue in hopes of housing friends, family, workers, et cetera. So I'm just that, I guess that's my wonder there, it's a little understand where it's coming from, but I just the impact that that has on the overall situation may be more negative than positive if there isn't a secondary plan. So I guess that's my question and I know you don't respond to questions, but maybe at a future meeting, someone could answer that or feel free to email me. My email is on file.
Campbell, I think Tucker can definitely clarify that for you and we'll, we'll have him reach out to you.
Brooke. Donna, if I'm, if I might, just for the public record, the numbers Campbell quoted are are not accurate as to what was, we voted on. And so I suggest that everyone go and look at last week's packet and the AIS is from Tucker. The numbers are small as to the units being set aside from municipal employees. It's, it's a percentage of the percentage of, of local preference. So
Yes.
It's a preference, not a guarantee.
That, that, and that, that's correct. And Campbell, Tucker can clarify that for you and anyone in the public who's concerned about that, please get clarification. Thank you. Anne Duas, did, did you have another comment?
I let her in, but she's not responding.
Tucker Holland.
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I thought it was important to clarify this real time because the Ms. Sutton was just very off on, on the numbers. So with respect to what the board did last week, we are seeking a special local preference for two of the units at thirty-one fairgrounds, you know, which are part of the eighty percent AMI grouping and potentially up to six additional units at the AMI levels above that. There is no guarantee, as we discussed last week, that the executive office of housing and livable communities would, would grant this, but we're talking about in that case, it would be eight out of the twenty-eight units. And in the case of Surfside Crossing, there are thirty-nine units that are restricted at the eighty percent AMI level. And we are seeking this special municipal local preference for six of those thirty-nine, and it would be of a similar proportion for six fairgrounds when that happens. It's a little bit higher percentage with regard to thirty-one fairgrounds, just by nature of the fact that it is a, a smaller project, but by no means is this all of the units intended to be for municipal employees. So I, I hope this is helpful.
Thank, thank you. Are there any further public comments this evening? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. We do have one new business item. David Gray.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. We have a couple of situations going on down on Orange Street with some catch basins that are getting to the point where we could have some potential road collapses in a couple of areas. So we're seeking a a waiver for some night work coming up. Hopefully, they can all be done within the next two weeks. But we have, will have police details and everything like that, but it's gonna be performed by one of our outside contractors to, to get this work done and we're gonna try to do it at night after all the boats. So probably between six or seven and then up until ten thirty, eleven o'clock if, if we can. I don't think, we want to go much later in that area, but we're just seeking a noise waiver and a light waiver for those areas.
Can you just say the two locations?
There's, there's two rate by Orange Street and Cherry Street. There's another one that, that, there's one that's just forming by the new, the come on farms there that's kind of popped up out of nowhere. And then there's one down at the corner of West Creek in Orange as well that is settling and with, but some of the structures are starting to collapse. So we want to get in there and get those fixed right away.
Any questions? Motion?
I was just gonna say, can you just preface any motion with about our notification?
Yes, absolutely.
So move, move approval of the waiver of the noise by law, a subject with, along with a, a butter notification.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And we'll get out notes to the steamship and we'll go through Erica to help with some of the truck traffic that comes in on the freight boat. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up, we have approval of minutes and treasury warrants. Take those together unless there's any changes or comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. It's just a jumble.
Motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental committee requests and reports, the town clerk requests for appointment of constables, appointment, reappointment of election officers. Do we have Nancy on?
Move approval, as requested.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Next up, we have Nan Tuck Tuck, request to expand the two thousand and twenty-three summer season pilot petty cab program up through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. Does anyone?
And Michael Gormley's in the audience.
The owner is here, but does anyone have any questions on expanding the season?
I have no problem with season. There is a request and BPAC did speak about it. Did BPAC discuss your request to go to Cisco?
Though that's going, we're going to have that on a future agenda
Alright, good.
after we get feedback from from BPAC and traffic safety before we make any alterations to the route. This is just to extend the existing terms of the current season.
So I'll move that we extend the existing terms.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Town managers report. Review of preliminary FY two thousand and twenty-five general fund budget projections.
Thank you. So this is an annual presentation that Brian and I tag team on a little bit, and we gave this presentation to the finance committee on September twelfth. So usually Brian goes through most of the beginning parts and then I'll put up again close to the end, and we just want to emphasize, these are preliminary numbers. Don't fall in love with them.
Thank you, Libby. Can you go to slide three, Erica? Yeah, yeah. So every year we, we give this presentation, which is very preliminary as the town manager indicated. So hopefully, nobody gets married to these numbers, especially the numbers at the end of this presentation, but it's kind of where we think we're gonna start for, or end for twenty-four, and then where we think twenty-five will start for the revenue. So for the levy limit, which everybody knows under proposition two and a half annually, we can raise an additional two and a half percent in real and personal property taxes. We believe that the allowable levy projected for fiscal twenty-four will be a hundred and six million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, which is our starting point for fiscal twenty-five. So the allowable levy limit for fiscal twenty-five, starting from the fiscal twenty-four projection, we would be able to increase the revenue by two million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. We're projecting seven hundred thousand dollars in new growth. That number is most likely going to increase given the fact that twenty-four is, or twenty-four basically looking like we're gonna get probably closer to a million, one point two million. But as we go through this process and we get closer to setting the tax rate and get approval for values from DOR, we'll get more clarity from on new growth. So we have budgeted slightly conservative at this point, but most likely this will be able to be increased along the way. All told, the allowable levy, levy within the proposition two and a half limits would be one hundred and nine million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand. To that, we add any exclusion, debt exclusions or capital exclusions that have been authorized. There's nine million, nine, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of currently permanently borrowed debt exclusions, and we're projecting a request for capital exclusions of approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars as we go through that process. Next slide, please, Erica. Local estimated receipts, as the largest category is, as we always talk about here, generally our ex, motor vehicle excise taxes, rooms tax, meals tax, and then building permits makes up a significant portion of the one point three million. We've level funded these at this point because right now we essentially are only about ten or eleven weeks into the first quarter of the new fiscal, fiscal twenty-four. So it's really difficult to gauge where we think this full year is going to go. One of the ones that'll really probably give us a fairly good trend on where we're going for a lot of this is the room occupancy tax, which we will receive on Friday. And we'll do the comparative analysis on a year-over-year basis to try to get an idea of what we can do with that. We'll also get meals tax, will, which September and December are the two largest quarters for us on the, the quarterly basis. So September has always been a pretty good indicator of where we think even December is gonna end up. So when those come in, we'll start to be able to really kind of refine some of this. And I, I do think we'll probably be able to increase local estimated receipts a little bit, but probably not as wholesale as we've, we've been able to in the last few years. Next slide, please, Erica. So all told, for fiscal twenty-five, we're projecting a hundred and twenty million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in real and personal property tax levy limit. Abatements and exemptions, we're recommending the same with, with holding back four hundred thousand from that. Local estimated receipts currently, as I mentioned, budgeted at twenty million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. Given that we're in September and the legislature hasn't even had their consensus revenue meeting, we are level funding stated at the four million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand that we're currently receiving. We do hopefully expect that the current administration will follow through with what previous administration had done and at least increase the unrestricted government aid by whatever the general revenue consensus is. And we're hoping that they'll continue to work towards fully implementing the recommended changes in chapter seventy. But right now, we're level funding that at four point eight million. All told, general fund projected revenue would be a hundred and forty-five million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. I'm not gonna take everybody through this slide, but it is in there just showing a five-year growth of the revenue. We, we do like to show this so people can see how we've, how we've grown over the last few years, especially in some of the, the tax, the excise taxes. Next slide, please. Now, this is where I do like to stress again that this is very, very preliminary as we go through this. General fund salaries on the town, twenty-six million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which is about one point five million dollar increase. It accounts for all currently settled collective bargaining agreements and non-union changes that were made during last fiscal year. Does include provisions throughout the budget for any non-settled union contracts. Salaries in the school, finance CFO at the school gave us these numbers, so I'm relatively confident that they're gonna be where they end up. But thirty-two million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand for the school does include the recently announced and settled teachers agreement as well. Request for six hundred thousand dollars in transfer from the, to the community school for salaries in town and school, sixty million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Operating expenses, nine point nine million. On the town side, this is a reduction of about a little over one point four million dollars from the previous approved budget in twenty-four. And I'd just like to remind everybody that when we start the budget, we back out all the one-time expenses from the prior year approval. So this nine million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand is the base that we're beginning to work from. As we go through the budgetary process, there'll be one-time increase requests that will get added to this. And we, as the boards are aware, we generally fund those with free cash. So mosquito control was a proposition two and a half override. So we've increased that by the allowable two and a half percent to a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Operating expenses from the school, this number was where the CFO thought that they would end up. Once they went through their entire budget process, they've requested six million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand for operating expenses preliminarily at this point of sixteen million, six hundred and one thousand dollars. Medical insurance, most likely one of the biggest areas that will have some structural changes as we go through. Currently projecting a ten percent increase to seventeen million, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Again, we're only in the second week or third week of September. We're still in what we typically know is known as a run-out claim period from claims in June through June thirtieth. So we're still really waiting to get a better analysis of what this fiscal year is gonna look like. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring that down from the ten percent increase. We were able to last, this year to just under a five percent. So we're, we're hoping we'll be able to make changes through this budget cycles. Total general and other insurances, which includes the laborers' union contribution, workers' comp, life insurance, unemployment and general insurances, four million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, primarily driven by, again, approximate increase of between fifteen and twenty percent in the property insurance. We're actively working and with our new broker, we did go out and secured a new broker for the property line of insurance. Working on trying to devise a new structure for the property insurance to try to hopefully lower that cost, which would have some positive impacts on the budget. Debt service is twelve million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, which does include principal interest and also includes debt that is not excluded, but also within the levy limit. Preliminary operating expenses, a hundred and nineteen million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Other articles, including unpaid bills, which as of this point, we don't have any for special town meeting or, excuse me, annual town meeting, and we're hoping that we won't. The department's worked really hard this year, so we're hoping that we were able to catch everything. County assessment, a hundred and eighty-three thousand. Health and human services, six hundred and fifty thousand. We are going to recommend, we do have money still in the special purpose stabilization fund, so we're recommending a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I do want to note that the town manager and I have had preliminary discussions about potentially increasing the six hundred and fifty thousand. But at this point, we haven't made any, we haven't had any more discussions about it, and we're still working through this process. So that's a discussion that's still ongoing. Making a recommendation to fund the reserve fund of five hundred thousand dollars, which is consistent with every year since I've been here and other post-employment benefit trust fund, continue the five hundred thousand dollar contribution to that fund as well. The, you are still on the rights. Oh, yeah, I should have taken you to the next slide. I'm very sorry. That's my fault. There you go. You got it. My fault. I'm sorry, Erica. Consistent with the two million dollar appropriation, a couple, or one point six million dollar appropriation a couple of years ago, one million, thirteen thousand to the Affordable Housing Trust, which would be in Article ten. This is a continuation because we have not fully and permanently borrowed all of the borrowing authorizations that ultimately would have used that one point six million. The commitment was to continue to fund that until we needed to transfer into a debt service payment. So as, since we're still have not permanently borrowed all of those funds, one million could go to the Affordable Housing Trust through Article ten. Town and school minimum capital funding, one million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand. This is a substantial increase over twenty-four. Most people are aware, I think the board is aware, under the town code, one percent of real and personal property tax revenues and one percent of local estimated receipts must be reserved and applied and appropriated for capital projects. General fund transfers to the enterprise funds, five million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand to the, to Ireland Home, increased by two and a half percent. As everybody's aware, that was an override, a permanent override to fund those operations. Solid waste has three transfers, four million, thirty-three thousand dollars. A override from two thousand and twelve of two million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and then the override from two thousand and twenty-three increased by two and a half percent to three million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand. Transfer to our, to, excuse me, the Affordable Housing Trust, the six, six million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, which is the two and a half override approved last year, increased by two and a half percent. All other article appropriations through, that are not in Article eight, but throughout the rest of the warrant, twenty-seven million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Other statutory expenses, which is the off sheet, offset, offset, excuse me, to the cherry sheet, one million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand. Again, we have level funded that because we're three months ahead of when the legislature in Boston starts their budget process. So we really are not, we have a lot of visibility to what they're thinking or what they're gonna be doing. General fund expenses, I'm gonna remind everybody, extremely preliminary, one hundred and forty-eight million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Matched against a hundred and forty-five million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in projected revenue. Leaves us today, preliminary, please don't everybody get worried or get married to this number with a projected deficit. Uh, with a projected deficit of two million, nine hundred and ninety one thousand. Next slide, please. Um, again, we do the same uh growth rate that we've done with revenue on the expense side. So certainly hope everybody takes a look at that. And I believe this is where the town manager jumps back in.
Thanks, Brian. So we always have a to be determined slide, and we won't go into a lot of details on this because we don't have a lot of details just yet. But just to give you an idea of what is still out there that needs to be either pinned down or worked in or further explored or whatever. So we have the select board strategic plan with potential revision coming up at your strategic planning workshop scheduled for November uh um October twenty fourth. I think it is. And there may be some new priorities that come out of that. Town admin has some new priorities and a lot of continuing priorities, housing and real estate office staffing. We've worked on uh staffing structure there, and we are hoping to um so we do have some funding in the current fiscal year. To work on that, and we may need to seek additional funding in the next fiscal year. Um, we are finding that a lot of time is being spent on a whole variety of housing and real estate issues that require much more resources than we have. Um, a lot of people who are doing a lot of other things are focusing on it now, and it's not as smoothly operating as we would like. Um, we have a lot of continuing priorities, including all of the items that are shown there, and they are um. A lot of them are in need of additional resources. Citizen warrant articles, we um obviously don't know what they are just yet or whether they would be seeking funding. However, it has been the traditional practice of the board and town admin not to fund any of that in the upcoming budget unless so directed. We don't know entirely what the school's priorities are just yet. Um, as Brian, I think, mentioned, we're expecting free cash to be certified, um hopefully soon. And that might um be helpful with things like uh capital projects. Because free cash is not used for ongoing expenses. Local receipts, as Brian mentioned, are not entirely known yet for uh quarter one of the current fiscal year. Health insurance, um I don't think we know yet what any potential increases there might be. Local aid, same thing. Um, NRTA potential service changes, I don't know what those may or may not be just yet. Um, I think we're in a um year of just trying to um get through. And uh, the director is spending some a a good amount of time on the fleet. And you've probably seen some new buses around, thanks to a lot of hard work on his part, we he was able to secure those. Um, and is still working on a lot of other things with the fleet. Um, PFOS remains an outstanding issue. We do have some funding already appropriated to uh. Do assessments and some limited amounts of testing in specific areas and developing plans. But if it becomes more of a regulated issue, we're going to need um a significant amount of funding for that. Potential fee adjustments, we have the assistant finance director in Brian's department looking at um something that you Matt bring up. Um, often uh during budget development time, which is should we increase all of our fees across the board by the cost of living or the CPI? Um, so we're taking a look at what that might bring in and whether that is worthwhile. And we have a lot of competing capital priorities, which we are going to go over with you in the next presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions um on this. Questions?
Question, I think I'm glad you brought that up, Libby. I was thinking that when I was looking at how much the food and the other stuff brings and how much little other things bring. That are humongous businesses out here, so I was thinking that would be great. The other thing is I did send uh the capital portion of this to the coastal resiliency advisory committee. Because they aren't really even listed and isn't even here, and it's it's massive. But the next slides that we're looking at explain sort of how the process and, you know, how are we going to figure this out? Uh, and my only other comment, we just sort of pre-comment on these slides. When I talk about funding things through betterments or getting neighborhoods to contribute, et cetera. That is because the more that we do that, the more we spread it, the more of this we can get done. And I know sometimes it isn't popular and people don't want it do that, but then it means that we don't do something else for a long time. And so I think, you know, be thinking about that, because sometimes it's appropriate to be asking those who benefit to, you know, pony up more. Than just zero. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. I think we didn't call out coastal resiliency because it's already somewhat baked in to the operating budget. But you're right, there are significant uh things on our horizon with.
Well, I want them to understand that there's a lot of other things that have to be done too.
Gotcha.
So it's it sort of goes both ways.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Uh, and any other questions? Okay, so at this point, next steps are that budget instructions are going out, or if they've. They're going out by the end of the week, hopefully. And uh departments will start getting their budget requests in by mid-Octoberish. We already have our budget review meetings scheduled with all of them, and we spend a good amount of November. October and November, meeting with them and then preparing our budget recommendations, which will go to you on, I believe, December thirteenth or fourteenth. Okay. So our next presentation, we had, we struggled with what to call this. Um, so the agenda item title is review near-term timing and cost of large capital projects. And we nicknamed it the collision presentation because there are some very significant capital projects coming up. That have the potential to collide with each other at town meetings. And we are very mindful of the impact on the taxpayer and are trying to explore ways to flatten that impact. And that is limited, I guess I would say, but we've got some pretty significant projects out there. That are simply going to cost a lot of money. So we want it, and you all know about these, these none of these are secrets. They've been out in the capital improvement plan for some time, but now they are moving forward in the capital improvement plan. So Brian's going to take us through, I think, the first few slides, and I'll jump in as needed.
Okay. Next slide, Erica. Um, thank you, Libby. So as Libby mentioned, we internally have been talking about this as we look at the capital plan and we start programming. The fiscal uh to go to twenty twenty four town meeting. And we really began to realize that we have an awful lot of projects in a very short time. And they don't want to use the word collision, but everything is going to intersect um rather rapidly over the next few years. And it really kind of led us to, okay, we need to start working on debt modeling. We need to start talking about execution, which has led us to this presentation or discussion with the board. As we note here, you know, we face two uh collisions slash intersections, the financial prioritization. Uh, where large sums of money are going to be retired required not only to maintain what we currently have. But to improve the island and the island-wide assets and construct some of these new projects. The execution collision, where many of these large and complex projects are simultane- simultaneously going to compete for the limited resources within town government that we have. With such a staff capacity, building materials, and potentially any currently unknown or emerging uh critical capital projects. These two collisions are going to create some financing and execution and implementation risk over the next ten years. That we that we really need to start thinking about as we do this. And um, so this is kind of where this discussion is with the board to preliminary start to discuss and come up with some. Prioritization, hopefully, at some point in the future. If you look at the current plan, that is basically before capital program committee right now, there's eight hundred million dollars in that plan. Not including all of the coastal resiliency projects over the next ten years. We we update this plan every year. We're we're at actually slightly over eight hundred million dollars in the next ten years. With the majority of that happening probably within the next five to seven years with some of these large-scale projects that are on the the next few slides. Um, there are more than two dozen capital projects in the plan over the next major projects in the next decade, including our island home, which everybody knows about. Uh, an increased focus on employee housing for town employees, a central municipal building, a new DPW campus, which I think everybody would all agree that we do need. Uh, next slide, please, Erica. And one of the concerns that we really started to talk about when we started this was. We have about sixty four million dollars in authorizations for projects already that have not been, are in very preliminary phases, haven't been started. Um, and we're only in bond anticipation notes, and we haven't even begun to permanently borrow those. So with all these potential future projects and the sixty four million that we have currently, there's a potential for a real. Some real difficult choices as we move forward, and it's really going to become critical that we we understand this and we plan and prioritize. Taken together, Moody's has never come out directly and said this, but there's always been an internal concern as we, some of these projects have delayed that. This intersection with the amount of debt that we have might put our triple A at risk, depending on how we finance these projects. If we're continue to be successful and the voters support us with overrides, then I don't think there would be much risk to to the triple A rating. But it's potential there if we start to try to finance this within proposition two and a half. And one of the things that that would do certainly would increase the budgetary costs uh if we were to lose a triple A rating. Because we certainly would potentially be exposed to some higher interest rates than we currently, we currently are. So as we note at the end with the this debt collision, through discipline, planning and project sequencing. Town administration seeks to dampen the impact of taxpayers when prod- major projects are competing for the the resources. Next slide, Erica. And it really intersects with what we are calling the execution collision in terms of our ability to execute and deliver the CIP. Is important as our ability to finance it. Without execution discipline, our financial risks will increase due to delays and increased cost on additional supplemental funding. Um, maybe projects get pushed back and never end up getting started just because of the the these two intersections. The town's resources is resource constrained and has a backlog of funded projects. Our constraints include budgeting and staffing of a program management office to properly sequence competing projects. We're currently trying to hire one project manager. We were, did put that in the budget. It's the beginning of hopefully building out a larger scale project management office that will take some um. Take some of the workload off the small group of people that seem to be in having to manage or be involved in every single project uh along the way. Um, staff resources to deliver important project components such as scope, timeline and milestones, technical and quality specifications. Um, we have difficulty with the management oversight, given the constraints that we have in resources and staff. Um, the competing priorities and contention for materials gives us uh creates an execution uh collision or intersection. That can be difficult for us sometimes to overcome. We have many computer unknown permitting timelines, a lot of these projects, OIH is a perfect one, is going to require probably an extensive permitting process. Through DPH and any of the other regulatory board boards um on a state level, not only the town level. Local objection to a particular project could certainly slow slow that down in our ability to execute it, which potentially would increase the cost as well. Um, and then unexpected emergent issues that require reprioritization. And they certainly do consume a lot of time when when things change mainstream for us. The scope and complexity of the CIP creates substantial reasons for concern, which is really why we started these discussions. Um, successful execution requires a strong discipline and difficult choices and trade-offs that will need to be made. Next slide. This slide really takes all of the slides behind it and just um kind of compresses them down to where they are. We are or where we see them going to be in terms of design or construction. I, if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but I don't think you want me to take you through every one of these. Uh, next slide. So the capital project initiation process, which we've put here is kind of the 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 formula and the steps that we go through. It's a long process with many required steps in the capital proven approval and execution process. Where there's always opportunities for delays or potential for delays, which we creates our execution intersection. That creates some of the issues for us, given the limited resources. And so most of the time that we have seen, if these happen, these delays have probably pushed projects out up to over a year. Um, because of that, so. Next slide, please. This slide, as I mentioned, we have about sixty four million dollars worth of previously authorized projects. It summarizes the ones that are four million dollars or greater. Some of them, we're still waiting is so the landfill closure, that's been on the books for about four years, but we're still waiting for DEP to make decisions on some key components of. Of that, so that's a delay that is not really within our our ability to overcome at this point. Uh, wait drive employee housing, which is a seasonal dorm that is out to bid, we have received the bids, we're analyzing the bids. Be having a meeting next week to discuss and go over those bids with the town manager. Designer, the new island home, we have the OPM engaged already. We are at the final stages for the selection of the potential design firm, so we are moving forward with that project. Townwide facilities maintenance, a couple of years ago, the town authorized a six and a half million dollar borrowing, tho- those are ongoing projects. Uh, well, when it multi-use path, which was just recently authorized, and then my economy pond dredging. Uh, which permit is pending, and this is a four million dollar authorization, but there is a potential for a million dollar, a million and a half dollars in offset funding. To come from outside sources, which would reduce the towns, the towns uh borrowing under that project. Next slide. So really, the next few slides, I'm happy to go through every single one of them if the board would like, and it's up to you. But these are really just where we think these debt exclusions potentially could end up at which annual town meeting. And how much they would be and the projects with a brief description of all of those projects, so. I'll take the board through every one of them or.
Brian, I I think um I'm gonna, I'm gonna to um take over a tiny bit here and get back to you in a second. I don't, I don't know that we need to go into the detail of every one of them, but I want to comment on some of them to clarify what they are. So this first one here, Tacoma Way Town Employee Housing, this is not to be confused with Tacoma Green. This is a completely separate project. This would be specifically for town employee housing. And um, it is basically on the drawing board right now. But it is something that obviously needs to get underway if we're going to have it anytime soon for housing the town employees that we need to run the town. The public safety auxiliary building is something that at the very beginning was an alternate for the public safety facility of one million dollars. Now you can see what it's at now, and it's really necessary to have the public safety equipment and vehicles undercover, which a lot of them are not right now. Um, so it's, it is an important project, and there would be some mechanical. Work that could be done in there. The Somerset needs area sewer extension, you heard about last week, this is design, and there would be, you know, a subsequent construction. Cost. That is, I hate to say this, but that is a possibility of betterments. However, a precedent has possibly been set a little bit without betterments for the Nanate Harbor. Um, Shimo Sewer Project Extension, um Parks and Rec Master Plan Projects. Um, they are listed there, there's three that would be going forward at the upcoming annual town meeting. And these are kind of desperate projects. Um, the Jetties tennis courts are in terrible condition, and we really need to reconstruct those. Um, there's been some talk of moving those courts somewhere else, but at this point, there's really not anywhere else to to do that. So this is the plan for now. Solid waste facility, potential purchases, as you all know, these are in um negotiation at this time with waste options. In conjunction with the expiration of the long of the uh waste services agreement in twenty twenty five. The new public works facility has been underway for several years now, since in fact, twenty seventeen. And this this projects, project has gotten a bit. Um, revisited because of its location and the arrival of projections of. Coaster of um sea level rise and climate change and the impacts on the area where the current facility is. Island home, we know this has been going on for a very long time. And if we are going to have a skilled nursing facility that is operated by the town or anybody else. It is necessary to get it underway because the current facility is outdated, too small, not sufficient for today's needs. This, and then we get into the Somerset needs area sewer construction. Baxter Road Alternative Access Construction, you are going to be getting an update on this at your meeting next week. So I won't spend too much time on that, but you've already had two or three presentations on it in the past couple of years. Design of the new senior center that would potentially go to the twenty twenty five annual town meeting. And of course, we know the idea is to turn the existing island home facility, use the property where the current island home is to have a new senior center. And um, then there's going to be a cost to construct that, and we can't really start too much on that. Until the island home is underway, and we also have a resource issue with the management of all these projects. Um, additional parks and rec master plan projects are listed there. Um, the, these are are getting more and more um needed, especially with respect to. The erosion that is occurring out in that area and the debris that has been. Discovered to be basically under probably most of that area, and the intent is. And the intent is to combine the debris removal with some sort of erosion control measure. And then construction of the senior center in twenty twenty five. Um there are some potential going to the next slide fourteen. These potential out here dead exclusions and these are. These are a little um not entirely known at the moment. The construction of a new middle school is. I don't. I don't really want to speak too much on that to get ahead of the school, but this is something that is possible in our future. The design and construction of a central municipal facility designed for this was defeated at town meeting two years ago, um but. Admittedly, we can't manage all of these projects anyway, and this this particular project, which would. Centralize all municipal offices in one location at the two fairgrounds site. Um would over time probably have a lot of benefits in terms of. Staff altogether in one location and the benefit there numerous. Sort of intangible benefits that come from that, but there's also the. Ongoing expense of having many. Remote buildings all over the island for municipal functions. Uh the Scotts at Fire Station. Um we've gone kind of around and around about this. Where can it be put elsewhere? Where from where it is now? Can we improve it where it is now? So that that's basically an estimate, but something will have to be done out there. Um and then some additional items. With surfside area transportation improvements and the. Roadway improvements um to Lover's Lane, Orkawa and Monahansett, including stormwater drainage, new bike paths. And additional parks and rec master plan projects at the mostly at the Delta area. Um so to be determined. We also have some unknowns with our potential future capital projects. The scope of P phosphor mediation, which I mentioned earlier in the budget uh. Presentation, the coastal resiliency planning recommendations. As we know, we have a coastal resiliency plan with. How how much Matt four or five hundred million dollars worth of projects? Now that is over a very long period of time, thirty or forty years. So that's. In our future, but not in our immediate future. Hazard mitigation updates. We have a hazard mitigation plan which is. Due to be updated and that has a number of projects in it that some of them are. Overlap with coastal resiliency projects, but um some of them do not. The Intramodal Transportation Center, we we still have this kind of floating around out there and nothing has really progressed at the Harbor Place site because of ownership issues. And. It's out there, though, so at some point that might be on our radar. And. General transportation. Projects that are meant to be things like bike path improvements, new bike paths, roadway improvements, things like that. Okay, Brian, I'm gonna turn it back to you.
Thank you. Um so as you can see, as we've taken you through this, the financial and execution demand the town faces dwarfs any period that we've dealt with in since my event here in the last nine, almost ten years. So. Um we're facing a very critical point of um. With all of these projects that we just took you through. One thing that was kind of eye opening as we went through and tried to figure out how to model this and and what it would look like um. We took all of this proposed additional new borrowings and projects out. A lot of them to the maximum extent we could, which is thirty years. Um which would take most of this in the analysis through twenty fifty six, twenty fifty six roughly is where it would end. If all of this was done. And we financed all of this with borrowings in twenty fifty six, when all this debt service was retired, we would have paid. Uh eight hundred and forty five million dollars in principal and interest. Now. A hundred and fifty nine million of that is already authorized debt service that we have, so we have an increase of about six hundred and ninety million dollars potentially. Is what we would be potentially faced was over the next thirty years or almost thirty five years at this point. Um which was pretty eye opening as we went through this and. You know, the Assistant Finance Director Sue Carmel and myself went through. A few it iterations of this debt service modeling with Hilltop and. It it's still a work in progress, but it doesn't get much easier as we go um given the uncertainty right now with interest rates as we try to model this. If we did all this, it is noted here, we would have started or completed a. Large number of complex projects, which would include a new island home, a central municipal facility, a D P W campus and several coastal resilience projects as well. In addition to what we just talked about in terms of large scale projects. Um we have additional projects in a smaller range and a portfolio of those projects in the ten to fifteen million dollar a year range. Which include the island wide roads. We have a sidewalk plan that we fund with a million dollars every year and an authorized borrowing cobblestones. And just maintenance on town owned buildings that will continue to to grow as we add new buildings to this. Uh as I mentioned, this was not easy to try to model to come up with something that actually looked anywhere near palatable for the next thirty years. Um you know, five six almost seven hundred million dollars worth of debt is an awful lot, but we also have an awful lot of projects that we still need to do. Um as the cycle for fiscal twenty five approaches, we're actually already into it. The Capital Program Committee has been meeting with people. Substantial caution and discipline are going to be required to avoid further complicating the financial and execution challenges that we've discussed and outlined in the previous slides. So. I'm happy to take any questions or. Turn them over to Libby if I can't answer them.
Question? Comments?
I'm gonna. A question in a comment, I guess. The first one is have you? Sort of uh. Laid out what you need for project management and do you have like a what we need, how we're going to get there? Because I think a lot of this is going to be dependent on. Having staff dedicated to follow up and do this. You know, do you know what you need? And have a you sort of a a plan to get there.
So I think. To answer that question, I think we have a. A general understanding of what we need in terms of project management, and we did put a plan together. In last year's budget, we did request, we did request um. More than just one project manager. We've made a presentation to the town manager and town administration on that. Um we decided to start with one. To to because partly because of the difficulty in finding. Qualified people to do it and then try to see how it went with the projects and then try to eventually roll out more project management, but there is um. There was a plan presented and it's still. Still a valid and probably would be an effective plan if we we chose to to move it to roll. To roll it out.
Right, because I'm looking at it. I think you need to figure out who's going to do what, when, where, why, how they're going to do it. How many people is it going to take? There's. To you know, I think otherwise will be stalled. And then has there been any discussion of? Uh items that could be uh. Not not done or pushed out later? Has that have you done any prioritization? Or is that something that we should be doing or capital committee should be doing?
Well, I. Speaking for myself, I don't want to speak for everyone else. That's been part of this, but speaking for myself, I think that it does. Require some collaboration between town administration and the select board on the priorities and and a prioritization on some of this. I don't know that. Town administration can make the decision singularly, but. Uh that's just my my feeling on that. I do think it needs some collaboration and input from the board on the priorities.
Yeah, I think we I think we're gonna have to look at some of these and make smart decisions. You some of the park and rec people are coming saying, we want this and this would be great, and I keep writing. Back to a couple. They don't write me anymore because I say, well, we did that. We funded that privately. Twenty years ago, thirty years ago, we built that building. We built those fields. Why don't you guys do that? They don't like to hear that. They want to hear, great, you know, we'll we'll get it done for you. You know, you're voters and it's important because it is, but it's really important. We want it. But we also have a billion dollars worth of everything else when you add it up. We do. So I think that that's just. You know, and then we're talking about doing things that we can't even staff to do now. You know, so you know, so we can't staff and operate some of these things now. How are we going to do it? You know, so I think we have some really tough decisions and we shouldn't shy. From having those discussions, I don't believe.
Um Matt, that's an excellent uh point to make, and we have talked about internally about um the realisticness of. Being able to do these things. So. We've talked a bit about um establishing so some towns have a capital building committee that's like a standing committee. And so we've talked about maybe putting something like that together that can have some people from the community, maybe one of you, somebody from FinCom, somebody from Capital Program Committee. To help us sort through. Options evaluations um. Things of that nature. Our. This is probably a little bit too early to say, but um I think with recent collective bargaining negotiations and our comp and class study. Um we've been able to make our compensation levels more competitive, and we've started to see some of that. Come into um. Result in additional hires that we were having trouble with. So but you're you're right um. What it's it's hard to hire people to do all these things. If we're able to get additional housing like we've been talking about, that is going to help as well. And um. I I I is daunting to to look at these things. So we're we're trying to. Determine what, you know, are there? Any of these things that we could get away with not doing or do in a different way or do less or. Something of that nature, but the options are not really amazing.
Madam Chair, may I comment?
Yes, please.
I mean, a lot of discussion about uh. Need for project product management people. I mean, that's that's just part of it. That's a given. I think one of the unknowns is we don't know what the economy is going to be like. The thing, I mean, eight hundred million dollars, come on. That's just not possible. Uh and so. We say get a committee, study this. I think it's our responsibility as the elected officials to make those decisions. Well, we have to make those recommendations because. We really don't have. It's the town. Meeting that determines money spent, but uh. I think we should start putting it more and more on agendas. Just what are our priorities? Not just large strategic plans, which are, you know, we love everybody and we'll have a great environment. We'll have lots of housing. I mean, really get down to what can we really afford and what can we do? Uh I would really suggest we start bringing a lot of that back to here.
Um I'd like for us to consider doing a workshop of this board to rank. The projects. And just try and drill down on what our top what our top priorities are as a whole.
That I'm sorry, no, I was gonna say is as the uh rep to Capcom. Um I think that would be really helpful for the Capital Program Committee members to. Hear from this board in terms of prioritization because um you know, we hear from department heads and. And of course, everybody's project is. Important, and I think the other thing, this is very sobering. And I think it's it's also really hopefully helpful to folks who. Um. Think that. The town is the answer to doing everything. Um that that the community desires or wants, and the reality is. It can't always be on the ta the taxpayers. And that um. You know, the ice rink, I think, is a good example of a a facility that was. Funded through private philanthropy. Um perhaps in collaboration with the town in terms of a location or. Uh with other entities that have um land resources. But um. Because we want it uh now. I think people don't realize that there have been things in the pipeline for a very long time that are also really important. And that the newest idea can't necessarily jump the queue either, even if we were able to do it. So.
Uh I was just gonna say that maybe this can be part of your strategic planning workshop and we can. Send the facilitator the um presentation and she can work that into. That, but maybe there was.
No, I think that would be great. I mean, we we have a lot, a big chunk of time. Slotted that day, so maybe we could spend an hour on this. Okay, stay tuned for more.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Um and I want to thank uh Sue Carmel and Rick Sears and Brian and everybody else who helped with this presentation. We um. We really kind of struggled with what to call it and how to present it and. Uh we did our best. We probably could have spent more. Hours more on on it. Um.
In the comp plan days, that was known as the Death Star. When all the all the uh expenses come due. That was what we called it twenty five years ago, and here it is.
Here it is, yes. Um I've I neglected to prepare a written town monthly town management report for your packet, so I'm just going to give you a few verbal um up. Updates of what we've been working on. Baxter Road Alternative Access is um. Is taking some some a good amount of staff time. The town manager E news comes out tomorrow and that will have, you know, a listing of um items that we've been working on as well. We spent a lot of time on the prep for the fiscal twenty five. Budget. Presentation and other things that are already in the works for preparing the budget and developing it. The fiscal twenty five capital is taking some time. Um we are working on in um a much more robust employee training program. We are hearing from an employee morale group that we have and an employee leadership group that we have that they um have some really great ideas for. Training, so we're we're working to make that more robust and there's a lot of opportunity out there. The. Mass Municipal Association is offering a virtual train um leadership. Um webinar series, so we're gonna hopefully get a lot of people joined in on that. Spent a lot of time, of course, on the special town meeting prep. Um policy updates. We're trying to review um some of our policies that are on the older side and update them. Uh we hosted the Cape Cod Managers Association earlier this month. Long term solid waste planning of um is heating up and that is a once a month meeting. Um at least, and we're getting down to business with um our R F P. And real estate and housing, as I mentioned earlier, is taking a significant amount of staff time, and I've I've. Talked about this at other meetings, but it's we're we're constantly finding ourselves juggling. Potential housing opportunities for town employees rental and or. Ownership and evaluating them and who would be in them, and we have a a very dynamic list of potential. Tenants and things happen with rental housing that have to be addressed and buildings that the town owns that are rented to others. That have things that need to be addressed, so we're. Trying to get at all of those things and manage them and come up with a better way to deal with them, so that's taking some time too. And that's about it. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions? Comments? Okay. Um next up, we have select boards, reports and comments. Uh review of rental car enforcement complaint. Believe we have counsel. For this. Right.
Madam Chair, may I speak? This is uh. John Purton representing the complainants. Am I heard?
We were asking Brian Riley to start, right?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Uh good, good evening, members.
Good evening.
So I I am here, but I I think it would be appropriate for for. You know, Mr. Purton to be heard. Uh he has submitted a couple of letters and. And documents uh concerning this issue of. Vehicles being rented without. Uh you know, having the town's approval medallions. Um. And then uh. So I I I would recommend we hear from him first and then maybe the board members have. Uh questions and then we can get into the, you know, what. What the town might be able to do about this.
Okay, thank you, Brian Riley. Um John Purton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um is the audio coming through?
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So um I represent Nantucket Rentals, Car Rentals, as well as Affordable Car Rentals. I believe Tim Mahoney, the Principal of Affordable Rentals, is in the in the room with you tonight. And uh John O'Hara, the Principal of Nantucket Car Rental, uh sends his apologies actually in Europe. So with the time difference, he wasn't able to zoom in. Um what you have before you is a concern raised by Nantucket Car Rental and Affordable Car Rental. With respect to the uh large number of cars that are being rented on island. That are not complying with chapter fifty eight of the town code. Um as this board knows. Um chapter fifty eight requires that you get a license from the select board if you are going to um. Rent cars on island. It's capped at seven hundred. And my understanding was this code was originally adopted largely over concerns of traffic congestion. Um collectively, uh Nantucket Car Rentals and Affordable Rentals. Are a hundred and sixty three of the seven hundred uh medallions that this board has issued. Um the. Town code uh is is very broad. And anticipated, I believe, uh this issue in that. In fifty eight one, it not only covers what we all would, I think, understand as. The traditional car. the traditional car rental, the Avis's and Hertz's of the world, or the Nantucket Car Rentals or Affordable Car Rentals of the world. Um, but it's very clear that it, it picks up pretty much any kind of person or company that is renting vehicles because it specifically provides uh, in defining what is a rental. Um, making, you know, available for use. And then it is qualified whether or not such transaction is a separate agreement in itself or part of a larger agreement. So to the extent that cars are rented as part as adjunct, if you will, to another kind of agreement that falls within the town's code. Um, we uh, are aware, my clients are aware that there are several companies that are renting on island uh, who are not licensed, who are not uh, paying the fees um, um, to the town, who are taking advantage of town resources uh, without complying uh, with, with the code. And that not only is that a huge loss of revenue, if you will, to the town, it's awful, obviously impacts the revenue of these two businesses and I'm sure others on island um, who, who are playing by the rules and have been good corporate and, and, and town citizens for many, many years. Um, um, the, the code does provide uh, fining of three hundred dollars a day, clearly reflecting the importance that the town has given um, to this issue. So just to clarify, as I read the code anyway, if somebody rents a car off island, comes across on the ferry with their car, there's nothing, the, the code doesn't apply to that. What we are talking about is cars that are, if you will, garaged on the island, rented on the island. And there's been a proliferation of companies that are advertising openly. Um, that you can rent cars on island, delivered on island. And it's happening. Um, we provided a list with websites and, and um, descriptions uh, to the, to the board in an earlier letter. Um, we've also provided at least a preliminary list of some, you know, cars that we have been able to identify as being rental vehicles that are not with names and addresses. Um, and so we're hoping that we can work with the board to be part of the, the solution um, to what we're seeing. Um, I think um, um, the board has, you know, has an obligation uh, to, and I would hope a desire to enforce this, this bylaw, or excuse me, the code. Um, traffic is always a problem and especially in the, in the summer season. And that's really what this code is uh, all about. Um, very briefly, because I know there are others and you have a busy agenda. Um, there um, there's been some discussion back and forth between myself and, and by letter anyway with Town Council, Mr. Riley. Uh, and I know that there's been some behind the scenes discussions. Um, it's, it's our belief that there are many people on island who, out of pure lack of understanding what the bylaw, excuse me, the code says, or when they rent properties, homes for the season or for by the week, also offer a rental car. Um, and again, we don't believe there's any malicious intent to undermine the bylaw. We suspect they probably are unaware of a bylaw. Um, but remember that since um, this covers, even if the primary transaction is rental of a property, your, your code says, you know, if it's part of another agreement, it's still covered. So certainly uh, there may be an education component uh, of, of this. Um, certainly with respect to the parties that we've already identified to the board. Um, you know, it seems appropriate that at a minimum, some sort of a letter go out, maybe the companies are unaware of, of the code and just will do the right thing. I mean, even if we reduced it by twenty, thirty, forty percent of the people who don't comply, that would be, you know, a significant uh, benefit to the town. Uh, and certainly, although obviously this is not intended to be a, a revenue generating um, exercise, but, but um, the board does have that ability to find three hundred dollars a day, just with the by order of magnitude. The hundred and fifty some odd cars we provided to, to the board in a prior letter, you put that out, that's forty-five thousand dollars a day of revenue. Um, and plus whatever licensing fees that they're not paying. So we, we come really to raise the issue um, uh, with, with the board, uh, to ask how we might be your partner uh, in coming up with a solution. Um, you, again, you have two good longstanding corporate citizens of Nantucket. Um, and you know, it's, it's a collective problem, we believe. So with that, um, I'll, I'm happy to respond to any comments or I don't know if Mr. Mahoney, if the board might recognize uh, Mr. Mahoney, uh, if he wishes to add anything. Um, but with that, I'll, I'll, I'll put my mute on and be quiet. Thank you.
Just state your name at the mic.
My name's Tim Mahoney. I'm the Principal at Affordable Rentals in Nantucket. Um, Mr. Perton said, uh, most of what we, we were, uh, we went over. The um, the traffic is, is an issue for everyone. And um, I think the extra three or four hundred rental cars are definitely part of it. I don't know that the, those cars are being, you know, they're, excuse me. He went through most of this. Yeah, I mean, where they're, where they're being kept, if they're residential areas, there's some zoning stuff, there's some licensing, they have cheaper beach permits than we have. Um, they have downtown parking permits on a lot of them, uh, which wouldn't be available to us for good reason. And um, yeah, the bylaws really well written. It isn't a uh, what is a pool? What is a, what is a short-term rental? It's what is a rental car? And these are rental cars. Um, so we uh, we appreciate your hearing us. Thanks.
Thank you. Just state your name.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Noah Carbert, Airport Manager. Um, I have a few prepared comments that I hope are helpful and in a collaborative spirit. Um, you know, first of all, I think we can all recognize that technology platforms for resource sharing, whether it's Uber, Airbnb, or now for Turo specifically. They're complex, they're challenging, they're disruptors, especially to airports and for their, for their sponsors. Um, I don't have any silver bullets, not only for the airport, but not only for your consideration. However, what I am trying to do is develop realistic policy options to give to the Airport Commission. And that's why I'm here to address you and give you some of my insights. Um, I've asked Airport Counsel to reach out to Attorney Perton, um, as part of this issue is specific to the airport. Um, and I, I think that's going to be a code conversation. I look forward to that happening. We'll continue to update the Town Manager and, and Town Counsel with that. Um, for the airport-specific information, the airport has three incumbent traditional car rental operators. These are brick and mortar you know, operators at the airport. Some of them are year-round. They provide a high-quality service, not only to airport passengers, but to the general public. We can't necessarily discern between a um, an airline passenger and a member of the public who came over on the boat. But a lot of people do, do rent from the airport because it's convenient. Uh, in a typical year, our three car rental companies collectively are responsible for forty-three thousand contract rental days. They employ dozens of workers and they generate approximately one million dollars in revenue to the airport. This summer, I took a look at our initial numbers, the ones that are available to me through, I believe, July. And car rental operator gross income is down approximately fourteen percent on the basis of a twenty-one percent reduction in contract rental days. And this is despite steady airport passenger activity year over year. And to me implies the loss of up to nine thousand contract rental days by the year's end by, by Turo or similar ride-sharing services. Turo is the largest one. Just how Uber was the largest rideshare service. So I'll, I'll speak to Turo specifically. I'm not here to represent an airport economic position. Our revenue sources are adaptable. I'm not here to represent that the airport is hurting and you have to do something for the airport. But I am concerned about the viability of our three companies as continued pressure on them could cause us to lose one of them. Or one of them may stop operating year-round and providing that service year-round. Um, those operators are really in the best position to discuss their own individual economic impacts. I just wanted to let you know, I've looked at the gross numbers and I can verify it. It's real. I have several potential policy directions I can recommend and develop for the Airport Commission. Um, the reason I'm really before you is because of the, the medallion issue and the applicability issue. It's the most important influence on airport policy. And it's also in my exam, it's, in my opinion, it's an example of a shared destiny that, that we both have. For example, if the airport were so inclined to enter into an agreement with Turo, maybe it could level the playing field with our incumbents all the way or part of the way. But then we would also be acknowledging Turo as um, sanctioned rental car operator without them being subject to the town medallion policy. I don't want to be in that position of setting a precedent for the whole island. I don't want to recommend that to the Airport Commission. And I don't want to undermine the Select Board. This is a regulation that's clearly in their wheelhouse to, to regulate. Um, there's also the danger if the airport takes no action on an agreement, we risk a situation where Turo continues to undercut our incumbent operators. Much like rideshares, our rival passengers come from areas where service like Turo is very popular and I think they are going to have a propensity to utilize it. And that's why I think the airport has a role in this conversation. Um, I don't want to unnecessarily or unwittingly establish a, a basic, you know, free market um, position for the town. I really do want to defend our incumbent operators. So I don't want to represent to you that the Select Board has to absolutely take an action for the airport to move forward because I don't think that's true, but I think it's best if you do. Um, if the Select Board, you know, intends to apply the current system to Turo, or if the Select Board decides otherwise, um, that's important to us. Certainly welcome to agree or disagree. And then the airport could go ahead and determine its policy direction, continue to work with the town. But again, I think it's, it's really best in this situation if we could take your lead specifically on the medallion issue. Be here to answer any questions if you might have them of me. So thank you.
Just please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Ray Conlon. I own Nantucket Windmill Auto Rental. And we've been in business at the airport since nineteen seventy. Um, back in nineteen eighty-eight, the chapter fifty-eight was uh, framed and it took effect in nineteen, uh, excuse me, uh, what do you call it there? In eighty-nine. The number of uh, medallions was established at seven hundred. And it worked very well at that number up until a couple of years ago, when an explosion occurred of unauthorized and basically illegal car rentals on Nantucket. Uh, you've been presented with the names and addresses of the uh, I don't want to call them perpetrators, but of the people performing this illegal act. And it does have an effect on us, but I'm also here as a resident of Nantucket. And up until a couple of years ago, I could leave my house on Skyline Drive and be on Main Street in fifteen minutes. Now it takes sometimes an hour and a half. I could leave my office at the airport and be in town in fifteen minutes, an hour and a half. And if I'm going to sconce it, before I get on Milestone Road, it's a forty-minute wait on, uh, what do you call it? There are hoop of, um, nobody found road. This explosion of the number of cars is directly attributable to these illegal cars. And the, give you some idea of the scope. The number of these illegal cars, uh, as I refer to them, you may have viewed it otherwise, but exceeds the number of all the parking spots on Main Street, Center Street, Broad Street, and all the small streets in the middle, plus the Stop and Shop Lot. So these cars are choking the in-town area. It's not fun to live here anymore. You can't get anywhere. And, you know, I'm getting a little old to ride my bike. So, you know, and that's hazard, hazardous as it is uh, with the lack of, uh, what do you call it? Their uh, bike pass. But near the end of there, the um, penalty is three hundred dollars per day. And we pay a penalty in the sense that we abide by the law. We give the airport hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. We give the town tens upon, uh, you know, upwards of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars in excise taxes, fees, and we have to buy rental medallions, uh, or, or uh, beach medallions and the um, you, you can go to the Turo website right now and see the, the people have provided it, provided you an easy way of finding out who they are because they take the pictures of their vehicles, including license plates. And many of them have town uh, beach stickers on them. So I'm going in and spending two hundred dollars for every vehicle to get just that beach sticker. And these people get them at the private rate, which is, I think, one-fourth of that. And Great Point, uh, which is a private concern, obviously, uh, the conservation area out there, sells these rental cars, rental Jeeps, uh, rental star passes. So they have everything but the medallion. And the Select Board back in nineteen eighty-eight and eighty-nine and all the boards since then realized that limiting this uh, is gonna be a very, uh, a grave importance because Nantucket is gonna become a parking lot, which it is if you want to go anywhere in the summer on Nantucket. The sheer scope of the numbers, uh, as I say, fill all the parking spots in town. Every one. Not a single other person can park there other than these cars if they all were in there. That's the, that's the scope of the uh, the number of uh, additional cars. It exceeds the framers of this law, their intent. And their intent was good. It was not to make, turn Nantucket into a parking lot, which it is. Anyway, thank you for your time and I hope you, uh, what do you call it? Take the heart. And I'm available for any questions you may want to ask. I've uh, been working at the, on the coronal business since nineteen seventy. And I've owned a windmill since nineteen eighty-five. So, and we have a, a fairly substantial, we're the second largest holder of medallions on Nantucket. And to give you an, an idea of how important we view the restriction, last year I had a vehicle sold because I also operate in Nantucket Windmill Auto Sales across from the airport. And that particular sale fell through, so I ended up with an extra car. So I had to refuse a new car. I had, by, by contract, well, which I have with one of the uh, uh, major manufacturers, uh, Toyota. Uh, I had to take the car. So that car, brand-new car, brand-new Camry, sat in Hyannis at the airport. I think I used it personally four or five days last summer. But I couldn't bring it to Nantucket because I couldn't get a medallion for it. And I've, the sheer weight of the three hundred dollar per day penalty prevented me from bringing it. I can't afford three hundred dollars a day in penalty. But these people are parking in the parking lot behind you, right out here. They're storing their cars there. They're parking on the public streets. And when they're not in use, uh, and there's a lot of these vehicles just asking for some, uh, level playing field. And the level playing field entails, uh, you know, I wish there were fewer rental cars on the island, even the seven hundred legal ones, because we just can't move on this island. Nantucket has outgrown its streets. Do with that as you may. Thank you.
I'm not sure where to go with this. Um, Brian, Brian Riley, our Town Counsel, could you go over a little bit what our options are?
Uh,
For everyone's benefit?
Well, I can, I can tell you, Madam Chair. I, I think they're limited from a practical sense, but uh, you know, I, I will say that I agree that, you know, chapter fifty-eight Limits the number of rental vehicles. And you have to get duly licensed or get a medallion. And if you don't have one and you're renting your car. I don't think I disagree that that's, you know, violates the the bylaw. The the problem, and I've I've talked to Chief Pittman about this. I don't know if he's going to be on. Is, you know, how to enforce that. I mean, we do. I did see the lengthy list of cars that are apparently registered with through Turo. And I know they're. They're the most well-known ones. I expect those other ones as well. But from an enforcement perspective, you know, I think the problem is, just like it was with Uber and taxis. That, you know, everything happens online, including exchange of of the fees. And so. You're trying to find somebody who's handing their keys off to a person who's going to take it for a week and then. Gets same things happens a week later. I'm just not sure how the police or anybody else can. You know, can can enforce that. Now, what could we? You know, send some sort of cease and desist letter to Turo? I expect they wouldn't pay much attention to it. Could you try to reach out to the people who are identified as advertising on Turo? As, you know, I suppose there wouldn't be anything wrong with that. But again. People may feel that since everything happens online, they're not going to be. They're not going to be caught and and have to pay three hundred dollars for it. You know, I think that's the the problem. And again, this probably sounds familiar to you as well from Uber and the taxis. Is how to enforce seems very difficult, particularly with. With the island's limited, you know, police staffing, and we're busy with all kinds of other things as well. Eventually. As far as the taxis and businesses, the legislature adopted something that made you. Register with them. And the town made some money off it. Or at least they're supposed to be. I hope that's working. But but I don't expect that made the taxi companies, you know, any happier. And this seems to be a very similar situation. I mean, I. I don't know of other towns that we work with or that I've heard of that are trying to. Crack down on this. If they do have a bylaw, which. Says you can't have a car, you can't rent your car unless you are licensed by the town. You know, they're dealing with the same issue. I'm just not, I'm certainly not aware of any successful. Efforts. We could try to figure out if there are other towns and put our heads together on this. But, you know, it seems to me that that's the practical problem with dealing with this. Unless we can figure out some way to. You know. Regulate or at least locate, you know, these transactions that are happening without the license. And, you know, perhaps make people think twice about engaging with Turo or other companies. I just, I don't have much of an option to give you to answer your question, Madam Chair. But, you know, again, I don't disagree with the points that Attorney Perton made that. You're not supposed to be able to rent your car to someone on the island. For a fee unless you are, you know, registered with the town under chapter fifty eight.
Thank you. I would like to get some more feedback from the airport commission as they discuss this further. And then there's actually another layer to this that hasn't really been raised tonight is what about the. Let's call them legitimate car rental companies that are located off island. Many people rent a car in Boston or Hyannis and bring it over on the ferry. And so. What are the rules there as well? Because they're obviously don't have a town medallion. Right, but. However, it's sort of the same thing that people are renting a car and bringing it here.
It's not the same thing. This to me is fairness. And I believe that this is patently unfair. What is happening? Are people, we have rules. It's not legal. People are ignoring the rules. We aren't enforcing the rules. And it's growing into a bigger issue. When it was maybe six or eight cars two years ago, you know, we stuck our head in the sand. You know, this was brought up and we didn't do anything. And now it's a major, major issue. And I think that this is. I don't accept that there's nothing we can do. You know, I think letters to people. I think you can go online. My wife was selling. Candy in her store and didn't have the right license. And the town found a way to come in and say, you know, oh, you need the right license for your can to sell candy in your yarn store. So she got the right license. And I'm thinking, we can do that. And what were they going to find her fifteen bucks, but we can't go after? People who, you know, three hundred dollar fines? It it's it doesn't make any sense to me. I I think that. You know, we have, we should be asking town council and asking staff to come up with, you know, a plan to enforce our laws. And that's how I look at this and not pretend that there's nothing we can do. I think a letter to people. I think, you know, you can look online and, you know, you we could, we do stings on the liquor licenses. We could rent the, you know, we could rent the car from and then show up and give them a three hundred dollar fine and tell them to stop it. I mean, there's got to be something that the town can do when it's this egregious. And so I, you know, we put in place a medallion system back in those, you know, in the old days because of the. Volume of vehicles and the concern that what we didn't want to have happen. In the conplan days, we didn't want Nantucket to become like. Disney, you know, when you go down to Orlando, you go out to, you know, Hawaii and you get off the airplane and you go and there's. Five thousand vehicles and you, you know, with car, you know, we didn't want it to become that. We didn't want to have a sea of parking cars at the airport. Because there was nowhere for anyone to drive them, and it didn't make any sense. So that's how we ended up. Limiting them to seven hundred and making it very, you know, clear. And so somehow we need to get back. To what? We had the right idea when we did that. And and this, and if we ignore this, we are undermining ourselves. So.
John Perton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I just wanted to mention and perhaps offer some some possible. Actions that the board could take. One thing I'd like to just clarify. The my understanding, as Mr. Mahoney and Mr. O'Hara have explained it to me. The primary scofflaws are not the people who rent off island and come across. On the ferry, because most people who rent off island can't get a reservation for the ferry. Especially in high season, unless you do it well in advance. So what we have are companies that during high season leave the cars on island for the duration. Of of the season. So it's not so much. In the the biggest problem is not that those who have had the foresight to make a reservation for the ferry to bring their car over. It's it's companies that are. Physically garaging for at least for the high season. On Nantucket. As I indicated or noted at the outset. We do believe that, you know, for many people, this is probably largely really a. A situation of just lack of familiarity with the code. I certainly think that. Many of the residences of the town who are renting their homes and throwing a car. Probably have no idea, and I, and maybe I'm the eternal optimist. I think most people want to do the right thing and would be mortified. Not everyone, but certainly. Those people who are doing one car or two car, and I'd suggest that's. That's low hanging fruit. That's an education. That's a that's a letter to the editor, you know, a notice in the newspaper. As far as Turo goes. As 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 we've provided, you can easily figure out, and we've provided roughly a hundred and fifty some odd names. Who are the people who are renting on Turo? And we don't need to know when it's rented. We don't need to know the. The, the, you know, where the deal was made, whether it was made online or not made online. If there's a car here and we know the owners, to Mr. Fee's point. You have the right, you know, whether, you know, you have the right to make the inquiry and issue the summons. And again, you know. We certainly believe this is a large problem, but we also recognize it's a difficult problem. And I want to again underscore that certainly as it relates to. To in the two companies that I represent, you know, we're happy to be your partners in this and. In helping you, you know, develop a plan, and I'm happy to discuss that with Attorney Riley or whoever. Whoever it may be in the airport commission, because I think there is a sense that we're all in this together, and it is it is bigger than just, you know, one small group. Thank you again for for hearing me.
So it it seems to me that. The research that was done by Attorney Perton that gave us the list, this extensive list of cars that and access to the names. Through the registration, right, and addresses that we could certainly send letters. To people who are currently advertising vehicles on Turo and explain to them that what they're doing is not permitted in Nantucket and subject to a three hundred dollar a day fine. My question for Attorney Riley would be, can they be fined for for advertising it? Or just? We'd have to prove that they actually rented it. And then I also think the other websites that advertise multiple vehicles also. Can be contacted. And sent a letter. I think that's at the very least a start. And perhaps some media outreach to remind the community of what the bylaw is. And. I don't know if there's another community that's tried to rein this in in some way. Do is there anyone? Who's in the business of monitoring and and enforcing in the same way that we're looking at someone to do to look at short-term rentals and online platforms? As a way to. Address this as well. Without. Doing this a contract rather than having a town employee doing it. Couple thoughts.
Madam Chair, I can address the one question. If we. If we know, if we identify someone who is advertising through Turo or something like Turo. I mean, if you could figure out where they are and. Could you send them a letter telling them that this is in violation of chapter fifty eight and we think you should cease and desist from that? I don't see anything wrong with that. I I wouldn't recommend mailing out. Citations for three hundred dollars just because their name shows up on this list. I'm just not sure if anybody challenged that. To the clerk magistrate, if the clerk magistrate would even think that's possible, but I wouldn't recommend. You know, going full bore on that way right off the bat. But I don't see anything wrong if if we identify people who appear to be making their vehicle available for rent. Sending them, you know, a letter just explaining. Why you have to. Get a medallion from the town if you want to do this. You know, how? What would happen if it ended up in court? You know, who knows? But I. I do think that that would be a, you know, perhaps a constructive start. And as was mentioned, you know, there there may be people out there who sort of see. Oh, yeah, this wasn't such a great idea after all, and I'm hurting the taxi, I'm hurting the rental companies, et cetera. So maybe it would, you know, have a constructive result.
Yeah, I think we're sort of wading into sort of trying to figure out how to solve it. I'm not sure we're going to do that tonight. One, one question I have is what's? You know, is the ticket the same as getting a ticket for your vehicle? Is like, if we're taking in three hundred dollars, is it a? Is it a ticket? What type of? Fine is it? Is it different? Noncriminals, it's like, it's a citation. It's not like a speeding ticket or something.
No.
All right, because then that would be on their license and on their vehicle, you know.
Yeah.
No, I wouldn't.
Yes, yes, you may.
Bylaws, again, Ray Conlon, I own Nantucket Windmill Auto Rental, but the bylaw specifically prohibits. Owning, possessing, or offering to rent. You don't need to catch the people in a transaction. That by offering their vehicle for rent online, they are indeed violating the bylaw. And that triggers the three hundred dollar per day per vehicle fine. Secondly, you're going to establish a precedent as we go through this. If. You don't nip this in the bud. Enterprise was very interested in coming to Nantucket. If it if Nantucket is viewed as open season. You haven't seen anything yet. The number of cars that will be here. An hour and a half to get into town, it's going to turn into two and a half hours. It's going to be really bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Just stay.
If I could, thank you, Madam Chair. Arthur Gasparo, Chairman of the Airport Commission. I didn't intend to speak, and I'll be very brief, only that you mentioned, you know. Seeing how the airport commission maybe, you know, handles this, and I just want to back up Magic Carburg's initial statements in that. I think that we want to work with the town, the select board, and follow your lead, and I see that it would be. I can't, again, I'm not representing a position of the entire commission, but I could tell you as one commissioner. I couldn't find comfort in entering into a contract or an agreement with an entity that is what we just heard from town council essentially. Causing a violation of your code or your bylaw. So I don't know there's too much to wait for. And see what the airport's doing. I think it's all kind of been out there, and I think there is a situation to be addressed. We're happy to. Talk about it if you want to, you know, have something from us, but I don't know there's a specific action or further. To be taken by the by the commission, and I just wanted to convey that. Thanks again.
Okay, I mean, I'm getting a general consensus from what's been said that we we may want to take. Some proactive steps towards writing writing a letter to the. News newspapers and. To. Individuals that are that are listed this way.
And I would like Attorney Riley to look to confirm what Mr. Conlon is saying is is, you know, is just being listed a three hundred dollar a day fine? You know, I'd like him to look into that and come back to us, you know, cut staff or have Amy Baxter come back and say, you know, here are the options we can do to enforce this. If we can get Sheila for. Candy, you know, like we should be able to do this. So I think that that's. Yeah, I think it's more than just sending letters and hope it's okay. I think I'd like to see sort of some staff work and. Sort of a way, how are we going to handle this?
I think that that's the the initial step. Is to put people on notice and then to really understand what a potential enforcement plan would be. Amy Baxter?
Thank you. I'll just say a couple of things. It's something we've been dealing with for a couple of years now. And I've been communicating with the airport too, as they've been dealing with it. Couple of things, it's hard to, enforcement wise, enforce something that was written before the internet really was. This huge place of commerce. It's Uberization, obviously, of this industry too. So it's been difficult for us. You brought up, you know, liquor licensing and all of that, which is hard for us to even deal with right now staffing wise. In a similar effect, I can't just go after five restaurants because I only have staff to really look at five restaurants. I have to go after all hundred and six at least twice to make it fair. So I'm concerned about. Being, you know, I have this list here, so we're going to send them letters or find them, but there's more. In that sense, and how are we getting these names? Are you running plates? I mean, we can't do that, that there's some legal issues there. I want to make sure, again. How this is done. We've been dealing with this, but I think there's a lot more that needs to be done to make this. This bylaw work with the Nantucket that we have now. I can tell you that. As far as medallions go, we have seven hundred. I have eight available. I have put online a request form for people to reach out to me when. If they're looking to get into the business or look for medallions, so I have a list of people when they become available. I have a list of over twenty currently, so people are looking to. Be compliant. I also have one of these businesses that. Because of the bylaw is allowed to pay for unused medallions. And pays for over a hundred unused medallions yearly. So there's there's problems, I think, with what we have now that doesn't quite. So there's there's problems, I think, with what we have now that doesn't quite work that really need to be worked rather than focusing on trying to find folks. I find a lot of people on Turo are residents that are trying to survive or trying to find other ways to bring revenue in for themselves. So when we've had cases where we can find out who someone was and it was operating as business or had their vehicles parked in the airport, then we were able to start to kind of to pare that down. But again, it's time, you know, we've we were trying to comply for all these businesses, so it's difficult time wise for for us to just focus on going after this and the compliance and finding them. How do we make this work in in twenty twenty-three? Because these things that were done in the nineties don't apply. It might have been well written then, but it just doesn't apply to the world we live in. So that's what I'll say is that it has been something we're addressing and trying to be fair about, but there's a lot of other holes here that I think we need to plug or work on before we focus on finding folks.
Brock. I I think we should start with an education and outreach program first. Get it, get the word out that we're looking at this. It's a concern. And and if we need to tweak the bylaw so that people can't pay for and hold unused medallions, that's something we can think about, but I certainly think we can we can do some education piece, and that might discourage some people from doing this. And it's not permitted in the bylaw currently.
Madam Chair, I'd still like to see a letter sent to the people that we know. A letter can say, you may be, or words appropriately, we understand you may be. I mean, I I get a little frustrated and sometimes I think we're almost losing control of the island at times because I keep hearing about issues of enforcement. You know, now it's it's rental cars. We can't enforce fertilizer regulations. We can't seem to enforce the height of buildings anymore. And then we come up with potential short term rental regulations that are extremely complicated and will be difficult to enforce. So I I think we have to just do the best we can, and and this is an example where we have something identified. We have people that are potential, however you write the letter, it appears that you may be renting cars illegally, and we suggest you stop it. I have no problem with that letter as well as the community outreach. And yes, it will take staff. Someone's going to have to go through all those names and addresses, but I think I think would be well, we wouldn't be setting the right example of what we should be doing. We should be going after what we can when we can.
I definitely support doing doing some degree of outreach, but what what Amy just stated really does ring true with me. I don't want to not recognize like what our world is now and what have what happened with Uber in regard to the taxis. We wouldn't grant any more taxi licenses. So Uber really started to take over, and if we have a similar situation here and it's not necessarily people bringing cars from off island that are creating like a quasi company here and don't even live here, and there's a lot of people that do live here that are sharing their car to make ends meet, then I just I do I do have some different feelings about that. And there's no path to get a license like the candy license. There was a path to legitimize that. There is no path because there's nothing available because we've put this limit. And if the demand is there, just is there some somewhere in the middle here that we need to be looking at? And I think that that's what what Amy Baxter was getting at, and that this makes needs to be a little bit more holistically evaluated. Something that I felt about the taxis and and Uber competition as well.
I think, yeah, I I look at it slightly differently. I'm going to do beer sharing at my house. Come and come and I'll sell you beer. You know, like that's is that legal? Because I'm doing it online, and then you come and pick it up at my house that I've turned into a bar? Of course not. You know, I'm doing sandwich sharing. I don't want to pay taxes on my sandwiches. I don't want to pay, you know, I don't want to pay my five or seven percent. You know, should I be able to do that? Of course not. This is the same, you know? And 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 just because people have done it for a few years and gotten used to it, doesn't mean that what they did was okay. And 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 if we have to change it and say you have to be within the seven hundred cap or something else, that's great. I don't, the traffic that we face now, the reason we did seven hundred limited that is because of the concern for traffic and parking and everything else. You know, talk to the planning office. It's worse now than it was then. You know, so the reasons that we did it, what we did then are are two or three times stronger now. So I don't want, you know, I want don't want to be going, you know, I I agree, we shouldn't like start charging three hundred dollars a day right away. But I do think we need a strategy on how to handle this so it doesn't, you know, and there are like, there's a couple of names in here that are, you know, that's people have fifteen seventeen. I'm hearing that, you know, what my daughter says is that some of the people that she works with buy, you know, ten cars to start the year, run them for the summer, sell them at the end of the summer. They make all their money on the buying Broncos, fifty thousand dollar Broncos and selling them at the end of the year. They've paid them off completely. And they've made a pile of money, and then they sell them. And then next year, if it's all right, they're going to try to do it again. So there's, you know, people are making these and some people, not every single person on here, but some of these people are making these into small little little businesses. And I think that that is not acceptable. It's not fair to the businesses that are contributing what they're contributing.
And and Madam Chair, if I may speak again, if we if we don't have rules, why do we have rules at all? And yes, they were made before the internet age, but they were made for a purpose of reducing the volume of traffic, whether you have an internet reservation or not, and we just have too many cars. I used to think maybe we had too many people on the island, but maybe we really have too many cars on the island. But I go back to what I said before. There's two things I'd like to see done.
Yep, I mean, I I don't disagree with the fact that one of the number one goals for this board is to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips. But we also have to get real a little bit about having super reliable, consistent alternative transportation for people. And if there's a hundred medallions that are being paid for and sitting unused, that might be a way for there to be a path for some of these people to be legitimate and be paying the necessary fees and complying with what all of the other rental companies are complying with. So does someone want to make a motion to start with a a letter and a press release?
I'd make the motion to to send a letter clarifying the existence of the bylaw to those we can identify that are advertising online to rent vehicles on Nantucket and that we put a letter to the editor in the paper or some form of media outreach. Also clarifying the existence of the bylaw and what is and is not permitted.
Is there a second?
Second, can I add a amendment that?
Yeah, or I'll go ahead.
Yeah, can I add that that, you know, that we get information in two months or, you know, two months, three months on how we're going to look? You know, the the questions that we had, is it that Brian, that we talked about earlier?
Some follow.
Can we get, yeah, some follow up on that so that we have a plan in place for this season? To start this season and into this season. So there's not just one set of letters and then we, you know, are back here next winter. You know, I'd like to make a friendly.
Yeah, so I would I would interpret that as that we that that we also review the bylaw for revisions that might produce a better policy for next season.
And and that staff come back with a review. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you mind repeating the holes? Broke the hole.
I'm going to shorten it. The the motion is to send a letter to those we can identify that are advertising vehicles online to clarify the existence of the bylaw and that what they're doing is not permitted.
Right.
And to ask staff to do a review of the bylaw and bring suggestions as to amendments that might provide a path toward legitimization for those who are currently doing it in a way that is not allowed.
Everyone good? Are we ready to vote?
Is it the path to legitimization or a, you know, an enforcement plan, a follow up plan for this coming season is what I'm looking for?
Okay.
So I'm not looking for a path for that. I, you know, if it leads to that, that's great. But I would like to know how, you know, I don't want just one set of letters. I want to know that we're trying to, you know, find a way to tackle this. And we're not going to solve that tonight. That's, you know, some some people have to sit in their room and think about it and help, you know, sort of.
So the reason I I spoke to it as a as a review of the bylaw, I think it's to speak to what Amy said, which is bringing it up to the current to twenty twenty-three that then allows for an enforcement mechanism.
Right, and I'm fine looking at the bylaw and bringing that to town meeting, but I also you see my point.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Are we okay?
I think we're okay.
With the language. Okay, all those in favor?
If there's no enforcement plan, then I am out.
I'll add add a recommendation on an enforcement plan.
I'm in.
Okay. I'm good with that.
And who was the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you all. Are there any committee reports this evening? Thanks, everyone who came for this. Okay, no committee reports? Okay. Next up, we have one public hearing this evening. It's a public hearing to consider the appeal of Nantucket Real Fund of of Historic District Commission Approval of Certificate of Appropriateness Number H D C twenty twenty-three dash O two dash seven nine O nine to partially demolish a dwelling and relocate the historic section on a site at Nine Sherburne Way, map thirty, parcel thirty-seven in Nantucket. I will open the public hearing just to lay out the procedure. After I open the public hearing, the appellant will be the first to state the case for the appeal. I believe the attorney is here.
That is correct, Madam Chair. I I will be joined by others, and I will lay that out.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'm sorry, I will be joined by others, by two others in the affirmative case. I will lay that out at the start of my argument.
Okay. The Historic District Commission will define its position, then rebuttals will follow, public comment will be taken. There'll be questions from the board. We'll close the public hearing and we'll make a decision. So we'll start with the appellant stating his or her case for the appeal.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Select Board. We're hearing our appeals tonight. So this is a six hundred page record, so I am going to do my best to very quickly take on two jurisdictional issues raised in the letter by the owner. Give a very quick history of the hearing process before the H D C and layout why three major procedural problems with the H D C's hearings rendered its decision arbitrary and capricious.
Sorry, did you say your name for the record?
I am so sorry. I am Paul Commoners of Anderson and Krieger for the Nantucket Real Fund.
Thanks.
After me, Brian Pfeiffer will address the misuse of historical evidence briefly, and Hillary Rayport, President of the Nantucket Real Fund, will explain who the appellant is and add some broader context. So I understand that the owners raised two jurisdictional questions. I'd like to just respond to them at the top. First, the Nantucket Real Fund has standing to bring this appeal. As the Montgomery case instructs, we look to chapter forty C for the definition of person aggrieved. That definition includes a charity whose purpose is the preservation of historic structures or districts. That describes my client, as you will hear more about later. I understand that the owner also takes issue with the fact that the Nantucket Real Fund Incorporated, two days after the appeal was filed, that two days later was still well within the ten days required to bring an appeal, and this is an organization of people who have long been involved in historic preservation on Nantucket. I think that that is a technical defect at most. It was cured well within time. Second, this appeal is not moot. The H D C has remedies to address an improper demolition. Section eleven of the H D C Act powers the Superior Court to order reconstruction. Section ten allows the H D C to impose fines for improper demolitions. Both of these provisions, possibly the entire H D C Act would be nullities if the premature demolition of a building deprived the H D C of jurisdiction. So our position is that the if the select board remands this decision, the H D C can re-review whether demolition was appropriate and then assess whether in its judgment, any of these remedies are called for. Even if the H D C takes none of the steps on remand that it should though, a ruling by the select board will give the H D C parties appearing before it and the public guidance, which this appeal shows is sorely needed. So I'm going to, as briefly as I can, restate the timeline on this demolition. There are more than half a dozen public meetings and two years of proceedings. So it will not be as as brief as I would like. So this is a summer cottage dating back to at least the nineteen twenties, probably older, and you'll hear more about that from Brian. But in any event, as the photographs presented to the H D C show, the main mass of the building has been in place since at least nineteen thirty-eight. This is a historic building on Nantucket. So the owner sought twice to take this building down to improve their water view and their neighbor's water view. The first time was in twenty twenty-two. At that time, the chair accused himself because he had an abutting client. After several meetings and feedback from Town Preservation Planner Holly Backus and what was then the H S A B, the H D C was approaching the conclusion that the building, including most of the main mass, was historic. The applicant withdrew later that fall and returned to the H D C in February twenty twenty-three. So at the start of the hearing on this project, the first meeting on this project, the chair started to recuse himself. And then he had an exchange with the applicant's agent that I would like to play for you briefly.
We're doing Nine Sherburne Way. Oh, you know what? I have to I have to recuse from this, right?
That's the chair. You'll hear the agent in a moment.
Can I add one thing? Maybe you'll change your mind. This is the next door neighbor, right? Which the the old tractor said that he would be.
I I can't.
I'm sorry. I I have a transcript of it that I can read off if the audio isn't coming through cleanly.
Yes.
Point of order. Madam Chair.
Hold on, I have a point of order.
Understood.
For the record, my name is Stephen Welch. I serve as the H D C Vice Chair. Here tonight to represent the majority vote. Several majority votes that occurred in this matter. The reason I raise the point of orders, and I may have misunderstood it, so I apologize for the interruption, that what were the evidence that was to be presented were the minutes. The H D C isn't prepared to address audio that is being heard now or other audio, or we may have brought video for further and broader context. So I think it's just kind of patently unfair. And in addition to that, the kind of story time of who the real fun is, I mean, this isn't real fun, that's for sure. But who the who this organization is and what they're all about, those aren't germane to the narrow scope of determining arbitrary and capriciousness. So again, I'm not an attorney. Just here, but it just seems like this is a, it's a six hundred page packet, and we're kind of outside the bounds of what was traditionally normally local practice accepted for these proceedings. And if it's going to be the case that it's accepted, I would just suggest that we reschedule this so we have an opportunity for fair, full and fair review of the information represented. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that.
I I would appreciate it if we do try to keep the focus on whether the H D C's decision was arbitrary and capricious and for what reasons.
Of course, two points on that. I know that the owner raised these jurisdictional issues. I wouldn't have gotten into them if I if I if the owner hadn't contested them in her submission to the select board. Second of all, the the crux of both our original and supplemental letter was the idea that the chair should not have the idea that, uh, the chair should not have sat on this particular panel. I think the dialogue.
May I comment on that just briefly? That, the question that you raised there is an ethics complaint, um, which is not to be taken up with this board. That is something that would be taken up with the Ethics Commission. If you receive a ruling from the Ethics Commission that says otherwise, then maybe that would be something to be presented to this board, but at this time, I don't believe that you've received information from the Ethics Commission that the chair sat inappropriately.
So, uh, two points on that. First of all, uh, the case Montgomery v. Nantucket Board of Selectmen uh, comments on what are proper considerations for the, for the Nantucket Select Board to take up in an HDC appeal. Those include, uh, anything that shows that the commission considered improper factors or acted for reasons outside of its mandate. And if you read the opinion, uh, especially if you supplement it with the trial court opinion below, it's clear that that includes procedural improprieties that, uh, do, that rise to the level of a formal conflict and those that don't.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely agreed. If there was a procedural error, but we, um, have, we have not been presented with an opinion from the Ethics Commission that the chair improperly sat on this application. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. That brings me to my second point, which is that we've been in touch with the Enforcement Division of the Ethics Commission.
Okay, so that could be information that could be presented later. So I would appreciate if we could focus this hearing on whether the decision of the Historic District Commission was arbitrary and capricious and not on an ethics violation that has not been determined.
Um, it is well within the Select Board's remit to determine whether it was, uh, proper for the chair to sit on this panel or whether the chair, or whether the chairs.
No, I, I don't agree with that. Unless I receive an opinion from the Ethics Commission that the chair improperly sat on this, I do not want to hear that information this evening. And I bel- I believe I can make that determination as the chair. If my town council wants to correct me, that's fine.
Uh, excuse me, Madam Chair. Um, in, in my opinion, uh, you have, you have that right uh, to, to limit that. I don't think that goes to, as you say, I don't think that goes to whether the ultimate vote by the entire HDC was arbitrary, capricious, or not.
Thank, thank you. That was, um, Brian Riley for Town Council. And if we do receive an opinion in the future, then we can talk about that. But as of right now, I would like to focus this hearing on arbitrary and capricious.
Uh, I don't, I a key part of our argument about why the HDC's action was arbitrary and capricious, uh, is that is that the chair sat. Again, the Nantucket, the Nantucket, pardon me, the Montgomery v. Board of Selectmen case makes clear that impropriety, that these kinds of improprieties, whether or not there is an underlying State Ethics Commission finding uh, are within your remit. These kind of procedural violations of these kind, this kind are often used to support a finding that a uh, an administrative decision by a town body is arbitrary and capricious, and I don't, uh, uh, and I would like to at least have the opportunity to present this information. If you don't account, if you don't account for it in your decision, that is your, that is on your interpretation of your remit, but I would like the opportunity to lay out, uh, our case for why his participation rendered this decision arbitrary and capricious.
The fact that there was even an ethics, um, investigation.
Say your name for the record, please.
This is Hillary Rayport.
And I did not recognize you yet.
That, thank you. Maybe recognize the speaker under point of order.
Yes.
The fact that there was even an ethics investigation is actually new news. Um, this is something nobody knew until we saw it in the letter from, um, the HDC. And I think the propriety of, um, and integrity of the decisions of the chair to sit and the conflict of interest is something that as public servants, we all have to be aware of. Every single one of you has to follow conflict of interest law. Um, and that it's germane, and in fact, the State Ethics, this investigation, if there was one, if there wasn't one, we don't know anything about it. It wasn't part of the deliberation of the HDC. It came to light after the fact, and I don't think it's something that can be allowed. Thank you.
If we get a determination that there was a state ethics violation, then we will hear it on that basis. At this time, we do not have that determination. I'm assuming a complaint has been filed. And I mean, fr- frankly, the building has already been demolished. And I will get to that later, that there's no particular remedy for this. But, um, or the portion of the building and the other portion's been moved. Um, and regardless of whether I agree with that or not, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be making determination on whether another elected official had an ethics violation until we actually have a determination that there was one. So is proceed with the way the application was heard and what the arguments are that it was an arbitrary and capricious, and we, we can hear this again if there is an, a determination on an ethics violation.
I, I don't believe you can. I believe the statute of limitations would have run by that point. Uh, for the record, I genuinely do not know. For the record, I genuinely do not know whether there has been an ethics complaint filed. Um, I, if, if there was, I had nothing to do with it, and as far as I know, my clients had nothing to do with it. Um, the first that we heard of the State Ethics Commission was in the posting of the Select Board packet. Um, the, the last, the last thing I will say on this, uh, for the moment is that we are not asking you to make a formal finding that he vi- that the chair violated the conflict of interest law. Uh, I understand that that is not your remit. That is the State Ethics Commission's remit. However, we do think that a determination on whether the chair should have sat, whether the chair should have sat on this panel as well, uh, is well within your powers as the Select Board. Um, and we did hear from the Chief Enforcement Counsel that they, there are many investigations. They don't pursue in part because matters are handled within a municipality. And this appeal process is exactly how this would be handled within the municipality. So I will, I will carry on on the hearing process for the moment. At the, all right, so there was the February twenty twenty-three meeting. Uh, the chair started to recuse himself and then did not. At the HDC's request, the applicant returned in late March with additional documentation about the age of different building elements. Uh, most or all of that information had already been presented to the HDC in twenty twenty-two. In the ensuing discussion, um, the chair participated, the chair participated in full. Our posi- I won't get into the details of his participation, but our position is that his participation, when he should not have been on the panel, uh, swung, swung the outcome. In any event, the March twentieth discussion ended with the four one vote to approve the demolition subject to site plan review. Uh, we know that Commissioner Coombs misunderstood that vote. In early April, she asked the HDC to reconsider, uh, its, uh, earlier four one vote. The chair said he would put it on the agenda. He didn't. That repeated itself next week. By the time there was a reconsideration vote on the agenda, uh, sixty days since the application had passed, and the applicant was claiming that a constructive grant had occurred. In early May, Ms. Rayport submitted additional historic information to the HDC as a whole. I understand she might, may have provided it to Ms. Backus or others privately earlier. I don't have the exact date. The HDC did not make any use of this information, in part because of the threat of constructive grant from the applicants. In late May, uh, the HDC approved a post demolition site plan. Uh, after that, for some reason, it took over six weeks for the COA to issue. A prompt six days after the COA issued, one day after I filed this appeal, the building was demolished. So based on that project history, uh, we see three major procedural problems that changed the outcome of this application. First, the HDC should have challenged the constructive grant argument. The HDC didn't take a meaningful reconsideration vote or consider information that arrived later because the applicant claimed there was constructive grants. But on March twenty-eighth, the agent had re-agreed to return later with a site plan for the HDC's review. That's an agreement that the process would take longer. It's not a written agreement, and I know a written agreement is SOP, but the statute doesn't require it. And the HDC should have pushed back on this constructive grant argument. Additional information was being provided to the HDC staff, uh, to the HDC and staff within weeks of this March twenty-eighth vote. It was provided to the entire HDC in early May. If the HDC had been willing to push back on the constructive grant, uh, argument, it would have been able to take this information into account. This wasn't late-breaking information, uh, didn't sandbag the applicant. This started showing up, uh, sometime in April, was provided to the entire HDC, I believe, in early May, and the applicant didn't return with a site plan until three weeks later in late May. Um, second, uh, the HDC got, the HDC erred on the merits. Um, again, Brian Pfeifer will give more details on what the HDC should have done with the information in front of it. Um, the main thing that I want to point out is that the applicant obtained better results by withdrawing and reapplying. It put largely the same information in front of the HDC both times. Uh, the only thing that changed was the panel, uh, because the applicant's agent encouraged the chair not to recuse himself. That that kind of procedural gamesmanship should not be rewarded. Finally, um, we do think the fact that the chair, uh, sat on this, sat on this panel is a problem. Again, he participated. His participation formed the discussion. This was a nuanced discussion about the age of particular building elements and, uh, this was a nuanced discussion about the age of particular building elements. And his weighing in could have swayed the HDC as a whole towards less, uh, preservation. A different chair might have also taken up Commissioner Coombs's request for a reconsideration vote more promptly. I won't spend more time on, uh, I won't spend more time on the conflict issue now. I am happy to, uh, lay out more of why we think it affects the vote, uh, or how we think the conflict arose if pardon me, uh, why we think the chair should not have sat on the panel, um, if any other Select Board members have questions. Um, as I, I will reiterate very briefly, the HDC does have remedies for an improper demolition. The Select Board can, uh, send this matter back to the HDC to evaluate whether, whether demolition was improper and whether it should take up, uh, whether it should pursue any of those remedies. It might not, it might decide not to, and we understand that. Um, but given the procedural problems I have just described, given the factual issues, uh, that Mr. Pfeifer is about, is about to walk you through, um, we think there is, uh, there are ample grounds to conclude that this decision, uh, should would, was arbitrary and capricious and would benefit from further airing before the HDC. Uh, I will now pass it to Brian.
Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Good evening. Can, can you hear me? I've got everything on.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on, on this, this issue. For those of you who are unacquainted with me, I'm Brian Pfeifer, an architectural historian. I've worked in historic preservation for the past fifty years with projects in Nantucket for the past forty. I've served as consultant in Massachusetts Historical Commission, the Architectural Conservation Trust for Massachusetts, in addition to advising developers, municipalities, museums, and homeowners. For eleven years, I served as Vice President for the Society for the Preservation of New England Antiquities, pres- supervising the care of its forty-five museum properties, and I served as Project Manager for construction projects, including the Unitarian Meeting House in Nantucket. I'm currently a member of the Design, Harvard University Design Advisory Pool, a group charged with reviewing proposed changes to historic buildings on the university's Cambridge and Boston campuses. I reviewed the applicant's submissions and listened through the various hearings. None of the information presented would be recognized or accepted as historical documentation by the Massachusetts Historical Commission, the National Park Service, or any client for which I've worked. None of the submissions contained original documentary search or systematic search of records that are readily available online in Nantucket, which has tremendous online resources, such as deeds, newspapers, and other things that are indexed. The historical documentation submitted with the first application constitutes neither a methodical building conditions assessment nor historical analysis. Throughout the review, neither the applicant nor the Historic District Commission ever settled on a date of construction. Nineteen twenty-three and nineteen thirty-eight were the most commonly cited dates thrown about, based on the house's appearance on a nineteen thirty, nineteen twenty-three Sanborn map and later on an aerial photograph. These are not proper sources for dating. The Sanborn atlases were developed to assess insurance risk. As such, they were focused on densely built areas of communities. Outlying areas that were not developed were not included. And the maps were expanded only as those areas were built up. Sherburne Bluffs reached that density of, of buildings in nineteen twenty-three, which is the first year in which it was included on the Sanborn atlases for Nantucket. That only means the building was there by nineteen twenty-three. Similarly, the aerial photograph from nineteen thirty-eight merely records the house was standing in substantially the same form in nineteen thirty-eight as it did in nineteen twenty, in two thousand twenty-three. A qualified architectural historian who knows these sources would note that they do not establish construction dates, but only bracket possible dates to be refined by research into deeds and other source, sources. The applicant placed continued emphasis on the nineteen eighty-nine building survey form that was prepared for this house. This form is unreliable and lacks any original research. It was prepared as part of what's customarily called a windshield survey. Such surveys are typically based upon visual assessment and checking off boxes. They are not definitive in providing other history, dates of construction, or ob- other observational materials. They're intended to gain a sense of the density and number of buildings in a community that may be, that may be necessary to survey. They are used to develop plans for surveys and develop costs for funding the surveys that will then include building-specific research. The only source cited on this windshield survey was the assessor's records, which are not accurate records of when buildings were built. The applicant asserted that the building has been substantially reconstructed and contained only fragments of its original building materials and finishes. Photographs submitted by the applicant show the opposite. Specifically, pages sixty to sixty-one, one seventy-seven, and one seventy-eight of the materials submitted for this hearing showed, asserted that framing had been completely rebuilt. If you look at those, you'll see those framings show roof framing, which contains two forms of lumber. There are the patches, the splicing in the sistering, and the original framing. If you measure the lumber, you know the dates of it. The, the patches, the sistering, is smaller than the original framing. Until nineteen ten, a two by four or a two by six measured actually two inches by six inches. After nineteen ten, changes in milling practice reduce those dimensions, so that today those dimensions are one and a half inches by three and a half inches or one and a half inches by five and a half for a two by six. They're called by their old names, but the dimensions are smaller. If you look at those photographs, you will see that the patches are much smaller than the original framing, which indicates that those framing elements are pre-nineteen ten and very likely eighteen eighties or eighteen nineties. Interior photographs presented by the applicant on page one, pages one sixty-three to one sixty-five show different types of flooring. Face nailed pine with soft pine thresholds and narrow tongue and groove board heart pine concealed nailing flooring. These are floorings that were commonly used in summer houses and also in the service areas of larger houses in the period between eighteen eighty and nineteen twenty, after which their popularity declined and other floor, flooring was used. Similarly, interior photographs on pages one sixty-six, one sixty-eight, and elsewhere in the submission show narrow tongue and groove boarding used as wall and ceiling finishes. This is an extremely popular finish in seaside cottages and simple buildings from eighteen ninety to nineteen twenty. The applicant asserted that the base of the structure had been rebuilt, citing as proof the presence of cinder block piers. Seasonly used buildings of this type are light structures and always were. They were frequently set on wooden posts rather than a full foundation to support them, ra- rather than digging into sand. Decay, decay in floor framing is common in buildings that are put on posts above sand, which holds moisture close to the structure. And repair of that is also common. Replacement of original wooden posts with concrete blocks is common, and such a change has been made to the Sconcett Chapel. Would anyone assert that it has been denatured by this change? A history of the property entitled Historic Information, Nantucket's First Summer Cottages and Nine Sherburne Way was A history of the property entitled Historic Information, Nantucket's First Summer Cottages and Nine Sherburne Way was submitted to the HDC, but seems not to have given any consideration. Unlike the applicant's background information, this report was based on original documentary research, which is available online, and it cites the sources of the information. It cites the historical associations and the connections with the development of that part of Nantucket in light that makes them fit the criteria for national register listing, which is the basics for the criteria for considering buildings contributing set under the building with Nantucket in mindbook. The research establishes that Windy Side was standing and was rented as early as eighteen-eighty-eight, and it was built on a partial subdivision created for summer cottage. This subdivision is contemporary with the Underhill Cottage in Scanset, which were built for the same reason, for people living in cities who had the means to get away in the summer, to have fresh air. A, a big concern of the nineteenth century was, was always fighting against tuberculosis and other diseases of the sort. And so it fit the same thing. Would anyone today disregard the Underhill Cottages in Scanset? It was the basis of Nantucket's popularity as a summer destination in the nineteenth and early twentieth centuries. In reviewing these submissions, I believe that HDC failed to provide a minimal standard of professional judgment in assessing the building and accepting vague generality with no sources cited, despite the staff's continued assertion that the building was a contributing structure. For these reasons, I believe that Windy Side was never fully and properly reviewed by the Historic District Commission, and I asked the select board to remand it to the HDC for a more thorough review. Careful review of the photographs of the structure and the building's documented, documented history should lead to the conclusion that it was a contributing element to the Nantucket Historic District and that its precipitous demolition should not pass without consequence. And the town has the power to, to create consequences. Thank you very much for listening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Rayport is next. I will say that if there's not going to be any contest as to our standing, um, she may be able to simplify our remarks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hillary Rayport for the Nantucket Real Fund. Um, before I start with my introduction, I just wanted to make sure that, um, everyone was aware of the pages that Brian Pfeifer referenced that are in the packet. I was going to suggest that they might be shown at the screen, but you all might feel like you located them in the packet. You know what he was referring to, and you understand what he meant when he said that there was not sufficient documentation to support the claims that the applicant made. Is that a fair assumption, or do?
Um, he gave, he did give the page numbers. I was pulling them off, but I don't know.
Okay. You're good. Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. So, um, I'm Hillary Hedges Rayport. Uh, you all know me. Um, you know me as the organizer of the recently reconstituted Nantucket Historical Commission, which I chaired for three years. Um, the position allowed me to participate in, uh, the renewed effort to survey historic structures on Nantucket. Um, I've also pursued a formal education in preservation, and, uh, God willing, I expect to graduate this May with a master's in preservation studies from Boston University. Um, I'm also the president of the Nantucket Real Fund, which is a five oh one C three that had its start as a preservation project fund at the Community Foundation. The fund was set up in twenty nineteen to pay for research, education, and advocacy for preservation. And we paid for a number of projects since then, specifically a preservation engineering study of cobblestone roads that was extremely useful for the town in developing, um, engineering standards at the DPW for those roads. Um, we also paid for research about the legal authority of the HUC to designate advisory boards, and we believe that that research will be very helpful to the current, um, NA PC group that is evaluating the HDC. Um, we believe preservation is good for Nantucket's economy and for sustainability and livability on the island. And we're appealing this decision of the HDC because, as we will show, the review process fell short of what is required under the law. We are concerned about the integrity of our historic district and our rights under the law about precedent and about public understanding of the local historic district law. So you heard from, uh, Brian Pfeifer about the ability to actually substantiate, um, historic research with evidence. And, uh, I just want to mention quickly about why we preserve historic structures. Um, we're not going to be talking in this hearing about whether or not the structure was historic. What we're talking about is whether or not there was substance, there was sufficient evidence to conclude conclusively that it was not historic and that it could be torn down. Because if that, if that evidence didn't exist, well, the, the evidence didn't exist, and we're saying that the evidence is available and that we would like you to remand this back to the HDC so that that evidence can be considered. Um, the reason why it's important, if a building is actually historic on Nantucket, is because it's protected. And it is protected because the entire island is a local historic district, and the entire island is also a national historic landmark. And the reason why we preserve historic structures is because culturally in America, they connect us to our past, they connect us to our community values, which include democracy, rule of law, and how we got here as a country. Nantucket was designated and its structures were protected because certain very special things happened on Nantucket. There was a Quaker community in the eighteenth century. In the nineteenth century, there was the rise of whaling, an improbable endeavor that led to great riches and prosperity for this island. There was the fall of whaling, there was the preservation of these structures basically through a depression, and then there was the rise of a summer community, of which Nine Sherburne Way is an example. And now, in, in the last century, in the mid-twentieth century, Nantucket was recognized for its leadership and innovation in the preservation movement, which is a national culturally significant movement. And for all of those reasons, we have the power to protect these structures. And by protecting these structures, we allow every single person in this room, every person who comes to Nantucket, every person who lives here, to commune with the past, to learn from the past. This is part of why we do what we do, and because of that, we have been given what in zoning is considered police power. Police power gives our government, you all up here, our government, the right to control what we do not own. And in this case, that is exercised through the HDC. And the HDC has the police power to stop demolition of historic structures and to stop un-inappropriate alteration of historic structures. And what they have to do is they have to base their decisions on evidence. And that's what we're talking about tonight. Did they base their decision on evidence? Um, I also want to remind everyone that the National Historic Landmark is a topic of a lot of discussion recently because Nantucket received sixteen million dollars from Vineyard Wind. And we didn't get that because we have pretty beaches and lovely harbors, and we're a nice place. Are you wanting me to hurry up as I was?
It, it's not, it's not that what you're saying is not valid and important, but we have a very narrow look at this, and it is whether the other elected board that we're talking about here made an arbitrary and capricious decision on this particular application, regardless of the entire history of Nantucket, which we're all pretty familiar with, and whether we agree with the decision or not. It's whether it had a fair hearing of five other elected officials and whether we can deem their decision arbitrary and capricious. So if we could try to bring the focus back much more specifically to that.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to do that, and, and we have been doing that. The reason why I brought this up is because there've been comments in the paper and comments from the chair that they don't have the ability to limit private individuals' ability to do what they want with their property. And so to the extent that that's influenced anybody's capacity to care about this, and I, I don't, I'm not saying it is. I just felt like it was important to address because just in this week's paper, the Chair of the Historic District Commission is saying that he doesn't have the ability to stop a private individual from demolishing his home or her home. Okay, so, um, uh, the, uh, the key question, and what we are all here to talk about tonight, is whether or not the HCC's decision was based on evidence. Things that aren't based on evidence are arbitrary and capricious. Okay, so, um, also, even though there's some discussion about this, appropriate procedures is a matter under the law in the Supreme Judicial Court decided case Montgomery versus Select Board of Nantucket. Proper procedure is also an issue, and it's within your remit to decide whether or not the procedure was proper. Um, as Mr. Pfeifer demonstrated, the decision was not based on evidence. As Mr. Commoners demonstrated, the HCC refused to hear evidence. They ran a process improperly influenced by conflict of interest. After the deliberations of March twenty-eighth, I began researching the house, and I found evidence that it likely dated to eighteen eighty-seven or eighteen eighty-eight. I watched the meeting on April fourth and of twenty twenty-three, and I was surprised that Diane Coombs' motion to reconsider was not allowed. On April sixth, I wrote to Esmeralda and Holly to ask about the timing of the issue of the COA, which I was under the impression had been determined and would be issued through staff. Esmeralda replied to me on April sixth that the motion was hold for revisions, and the HDC would be reviewing the application again. Learning that this was the case on the same day, I sent some historic research to the HCC and to Mr. Topham. I truly thought at that point that the process would correct itself. The historic information would be discussed, any errors the HDC made would be considered, and I'm getting at the propriety of the process and the quality of the information here. So this is why I pushed forward with creating a substantial report, which I submitted on May second. I thought the report would be welcomed. I thought our preservation commission would want to hear about preservation before they allowed the demolition of a historic structure. Instead, what happened was over the course of the next three deliberations spanning six weeks, Mr. Pole and Mr. Welch moved to block any opportunity to revisit the demolition discussion. It's important that this board understand the leverage that the applicant gained because the HDC did not oppose the claim of constructive grant, and I'm going to assume that everybody knows what that is. On April eighteenth, when Diane motioned to reconsider for a third time, Ray instructed the board that the applicant was claiming a constructive grant. He told his board that if they decided to revisit the decision to allow partial demolition, which had been moved and had been agreed, but the application was still open and under discussion, the applicant would claim the right to proceed with total demolition. This had the effect of halting any discussion at, among the HDC members. Mr. Pole also instructed the board that under Robert's rules, a motion to reconsider would have had to have been made the prior week. Of course, it had been made the prior week, but it was blocked by Mr. Pole. Mr. Pole and Mr. Welch instructed Ms. Coombs that she would be allowed a motion to rescind because the motion to reconsider the opportunity had closed because she had tried to make it and it was not accepted. But they reminded the board about the threat of the constructive grant. Diane made the motion anyway. It failed because of the threat of the constructive grant. This script was a catch twenty-two so good, it could have been written by Joseph Heller. Nantucket deserves better. We deserve a fair and proper and evidence-based evaluation, and we did not get it in this case. So we're not asking you to substitute your judgment for the HDC. We're asking you to recognize that the HCC permitted demolition of this house without any evidence with only with pictures that said this was built in the, in the seventies. This was completely reconstructed, and we have shown you by an accra- an accredited expert that all of those assumptions were actually wrong by evidence. So we ask that you remand this back and that we have a chance to do it all right. And, um, that, you know, we can have faith again in the process here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, would the members of the HDC like to respond?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Esmeralda.
Hi, Esmeralda. Hi.
Go ahead.
Um, good evening. I'm Esmeralda Martinez, HCC Compliance Coordinator on behalf of the Nantucket Historic District Commission, responding to the appeal filed by the Nantucket Real Fund with the Select Board related to the issuance of the COA HDC twenty twenty-three zero two seven nine zero nine issued on May twenty-third for a partial demolition and relocation of the historic section onsite respectively at Nine Sherburne Way. The HDC granted approval for the structure to be relocated onsite with the stipulation of the Bay Face East. The commission reviewed this particular application five times this year. Those being, those dates being February twenty-first, March twenty-eighth, April eighteenth, and finally on March, on May twenty-third. Every time this application was to be heard, staff made sure the view pack was uploaded like it's done with any other application onto the town's website. Sometimes not all the supplement information is available online due to the files being too big, but it is accessible for all the commissioners to come into the office to review prior to any meeting. At the last public hearing on May twenty-third, five sitting HDC members were present during that meeting. The motion was put forth and approved, receiving the support from three of the five sitting members. I want to address the first complaint regarding Mr. Pole's participation. Yes, he initially, initially questioned whether he should be recused from review on this application due to the potential conflict of interest. However, he then decided that he would participate. Someone did file a complaint to the State Ethics Commission. The State's Ethic Commission did reach out to Mr. Pole, and after a thorough, thorough review of the situation was done, it was concluded that Mr. Pole committed no violation, considering the circumstances of his initial recusal and sus- subsequent involvement. The second complaint, Mr. Welch acknowledged the applicant's concern and affirmed that there had been an error in interpreting historical information. He did point out that despite the applicant's presenting broadly similar evidence in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, the HDC reached differing conclusions about the structure during those two years. Finally, regarding the third complaint, Mr. Welch defended the HDC's decision not to reopen the hearing to review additional information. Additional historical information was presented by the app, by the appellants after the motion had been made and approved due to a, do, excuse me, approved to a limited discussion of related to determinations. The historic significance of the property has, had, had already been determined by the HDC. Mr. Welch asserted in part prompted by the applicant's attorney certain that a consideration of it, of information might lead to a claim for a constructive grant. According to the HDC Act, Section nine, a constructive grant does not apply when a mutual agreement exists to extend the timeline limits is reached verbally. Furthermore, Mr. Welch pointed out that during the March twenty-eighth meeting, the applicant's agent had verbally agreed to return with a site plan illustrating the property after partial demolition consistent with the HCC approval. This verbal agreement includes a commitment to continue the case until the agent presented the site plan at the HDC meeting. Therefore, Mr. Welch argued that the HDC may have just missed the applicant's contention about a constructive grant. In summary, the HDC emphasizes that the application not, Nine Sherburne Way underwent extensive discussion and review and taken in considerations from staff, advisory, abutters, abutters' comments and letters, also including any information submitted, submitted by Ms. Rayport, thereby ensuring a full and fair consideration of windy, Windy Side's value to the Nantucket History, Historic District. Thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
So I just heard several very striking things. Uh, the first is that
Oh, wait, no, no, I'm sorry. I, the, the HDC is still presenting their case.
I, I apologize. I, I didn't know that.
Sorry.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, Stephen Welch, again, Vice Chair of the HDC. Um, I'm not really sure where to start with this. Uh, we, you know, at the HDC, we are um, architectural review, character and setting oriented. Um, our mission is to protect um, and preserve the character and setting of our historic maritime and architectural environment. Um, you would think that by the testimony here this evening that these are not our concern and um, we are somehow working through some Machiavellian process to subvert that. So I take exception to even the misinnuendo of such things. I think it's uncalled for. I think it's like the Trumpin- Trumpinization of Nantucket, and I think it needs to stop. Um, so if I may, I appreciate you letting me get that off my chest. Um, the other thing I did want to say is, you know, w- we, we're hearing about evidence. Um, we're, the HDC reviewed the Sanborn maps, and we, we reviewed images. Now, you would be told that we shouldn't believe our lying eyes about images of the actual structure and our own understanding of architectural elements historically. Um, I disagree with that. Um, instead, we're supposed to, we're supposed to, um, review historically documented evidence, which evidence includes um historic short-term rental clippings of this structure. And somehow we're supposed to equate the fact that a structure existed there within the footprint established by the Sanborn maps, and it is the exact same structure despite the images that we looked at that indicated that, you know, perhaps it's not. The other element, uh, if I may, uh, which, uh, I think to my mind, and you know, I I'm not a mind reader. I don't know the other commissioners who voted in favor of the partial demolition, um, what they were thinking. But if you go to, um, could we actually go to the packet, the packet of the letter that was submitted um, by the appellant? Yeah, uh, like they're basically the one that was submitted to the HDC on May third and May twenty-third are the same letter. Um, there's some, it seems to be that there's along with other myriad facts that I think are being presented out of context in an and an incomplete nature. Um, this concept of the letter is being presented differently. I'm sorry, Erica, I knew you were gonna ask me that and I. Um, it there's not, interestingly enough, there's not a date on the letter that the HDC receives. Uh, I didn't go through, I admit, I didn't go through your packet because I've I've literally lived it for many hours. I'm I'm sorry, I'm looking over Erica's six hundred thirty-eight. Uh, the the head pages, uh, the cover page is historic information, Nantucket's first summer cottages and nine Sherburne Way. It looks like this. Uh, the reason I'm bringing this up is because I'm deriving from the clippings different, a different sense of what the structure would look like if it were actually the structure that were is uh was to have been constructed by the a family member of uh other historic structures at the time. So if this is an image of the uh structure, if you were looking at it from uh trespassing in the air, I guess, um, this isn't the image you would see. Could you uh go to the next one? Uh, next set of images. Okay, so could you zoom in on that upper left, please, Erica, just momentarily? This is a structure that um is one of obviously one the appellant uses to support the notion of historic structure in the area that the home, the structure that was partially demolished was a part of this era, this character, this setting. Um, you'll see if you look through the packet that the structure that was partially demolished does in no way resemble the structure in terms of the architectural elements, the details. I'm not saying specifically the genre, but the the level of detail and care. Can we go to the next image and the? Um, no, no. Here's another one. Um, the the structure, this structure is another really wonderfully historic structure. Um, by the way, these were both raised, um, something like thirty or forty years after they were constructed. Uh, the structure that is in question is a structure that to uh my mind and clearly the mind of the other HDC members who voted in the affirmative for partial demolition was not of this era, was not representative of this era. It was not representative of structures that we viewed in this packet of information. Um, and therefore we made a determination that instead the historically significant portion of the structure would be retained. Um, I want to just touch based on a couple of things. I I apologize for jumping around, but there's, you know, there there's a lot. It's like, forgive me for the gross analogy, but it's like whack a mole. There's a bunch of things that popped up. Yeah, you can clip that. Thank you. Uh, first, I just want to speak to the letter and the information the HDC reviewed. Um, the appellant submitted this letter on uh May third, and uh it was distributed to the HDC. Uh, prior to that, the HDC had made a motion and a determination uh four to one to go ahead and to retain the uh significantly historic portion of the structure and to allow the other portions to be removed, subject to review of a site plan. So we didn't want to just simply say, yes, you can demolish a portion of this and retain and and retain the historically significant significant portion without first seeing where they were going to propose to put it on the site. So that's why there was a bifurcation and um we waited a period of time for the applicant to return and submit the site plan. Um, that's also why we didn't reopen the hearing to hear uh additional historic information, even though, I just want to be really clear, between the time that the letter was first submitted on May third by the appellant and this information and subsequently submitted um on May twenty-third, I believe it was. Uh, the HDC members had an opportunity to review it and reviewed it because it was brought up in discussion at the the uh one of the meetings had that information been reviewed. So it's not like we weren't reviewing information that was submitted. The operative aspect of that is because we had already made a motion to approve, we'd settled, asked and answered, made a determination on what could and could not be demolished. We did not reopen the hearing to hear the letter we reviewed. It's not to say we didn't consider it, but we didn't open it and have public discussion about it. Um, it was determined, uh, it was, there was an opportunity in a motion to rescind to consider whether this was a valid information that would persuade membership to make a different determination, and clearly based upon the vote, um, it was not considerable enough for the membership to make a determination. I also want to touch on this thing about the uh taking and the uh power of the chair. I I gotta tell you, I wish our chair had that kind of power to instruct and influence individual members because uh Tuesday night, we wouldn't have spent a half an hour talking about noise about pickleball courts that are outside of our purview despite the chair's urging that we not go down that route for a variety of reasons, not least of which it could jeopardize and and create basis for an appeal. So the to suggest that in the same uh speech that the, you know, the HDC may not have considered evidence that Nantucket is about the law and preservation, and it dates back to our historic founding. Um, and that also the chair somehow did something wrong, and he has this broad influence. It's it's just a confluence of information that I don't think is warranted or appropriate. Um, and I don't, and I don't think it's appropriate because it's not true. Um, the other element is I'm gonna try and wrap this up. Uh, just in the letter, there was this concept of a forensic analysis. Uh, there isn't a such a thing that I've ever heard of, like checked with our preservation planner that of a forensic analysis. That's like something you see on CSI or maybe a TV show about accounting and and things like that. Um, so uh the and the reason I bring it up is it was asserted in, I think, two different portions of information uh submitted by the appellant that the HDC requested that. In fact, the HDC did not. Diane Coombs asked for a quote-unquote forensic analysis, and we weren't certain, we understood, some of us weren't certain, we understood what it was. Um, I I'm speaking here also tonight, and I spoke during the the hearings as one of the few members, and I'm not saying this proudly, but it is a matter of fact, who understand the difference between a contributing struc- structure, an individually significant structure and a protected structure under the HDC's own rules and guidelines. And in addition to that, I'd just like to point out to you that almost all of those structures can actually be demolished. I'm not saying they should. I'm not saying they shouldn't. In fact, if I did, I'd be biasing myself in advance of the next hearing where one of these come up. So I wouldn't do that. Just want to articulate that it's not as cut and dry as this is a an historic home. And historic home can be defined depending on what standard you're using as a home of a certain year over fifty years um pre nineteen nineteen seventy-five or before. So if the standard is that it's historic, we have some serious contemplation to do supporting, keep in mind, the HDC's mission is to support through the preservation, character and setting, an appropriate setting for these things, the economic benefit of the community. It's literally part of our, I'm paraphrasing, but that's part of our mission statement. So I'm just this idea that all of a sudden, anything between before nineteen, as of nineteen seventy-five or before cannot have a partial uh demolition or full demolition is just something uh we're aware of is not factual. There are nuances. They need to be graded. Uh, we we took those into consideration with respect to this structure, and as opposed to finding that this structure uh based upon its uh architectural detailing, images of the um uh the structure, the bones of it, uh, we determined that only the historically significant portion, which was the small portion, deserved under the uh regulations and guidelines and building with Nantucket in mind to be uh uh salvaged and retained. I'm sure I'm missing a whole bunch of stuff. I can see that, you know, you guys look like we look like around eight eight o'clock when we've been there since four. Um, so I'm just gonna nip it there. Um, I hope I don't have to come back up for a rebuttal. Um, but I will if we need to. And oh, last thing. Um, the 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 discussion, one of the discussion elements, uh, which is also a a a a name that's identified with the building Nantucket in mind is an intrusive structure. So you may have a structure that's historic, but it's determined to be intrusive. This structure was actually labeled by me and the hearings based upon my observations, my understanding of what that definition is, um, which is something that doesn't uh meld or enhance the character and setting that you saw those other cottages do. What you see from the public roadway was this was like a little rocket ship with this all kinds of structure layered behind it. It really meets the definition of intrusive with respect to um character and setting. Those structures are allowed to be removed without any consequence. So I just wanted to point that out. Um, I thank you for your time. I'm sorry if I missed something. This isn't my forte, but um we'll see where we go.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the HDC side? Before I take a couple of comments.
Madam Chair, I would like the opportunity to rebut, if I may.
Yes, yes, you will be afforded that opportunity. I'm making sure that the HDC is complete, and then I'll I'll come back to you. Um, Ms. Ray Port is also at the mic.
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, thank you very much. So I'm really glad that Mr. Welch um mentioned his idea of what constitutes an intrusion. Um, and uh that he also brought up the historic report that I submitted that was never shown on the screen at the HCC, never deliberated by the group of commissioners. I I don't know how they if they got it, they might have individually considered it, but they didn't discuss it in the group, and I certainly never got to comment on it. But um what Mr. Welch um talked about was that there were other cottages, and they were much prettier and much more elaborate and much more deserving of preservation than Windy Side. So therefore, those structures are gone. We would have saved them had they persisted. But Windy Side is not as nice. It's not as pretty. It's got this weird rocket ship on the back, and it's strange. Preservation is not about whether or not things are attractive.
Sure, I hate to interrupt. Want to be clear, I I didn't say that, and the appellant is putting words in my mouth by re-characterizing my comments.
Okay.
So I would appreciate if I would just beseech you to like, don't be stick to the facts and not rephrasing what I what I stated here this evening, because I don't think it's fair, because then I gotta stand up and do this on my own behalf and about behalf of the HDC, and I don't think it's fair to anyone.
And this interruption is exactly what I experienced when I tried to make the case on May twenty-third when I was there. I am not putting words in Mr. Welch's mouth. I'm recapping what he just said to you, which was that Windy Side had a rocket ship on the back. It was an intrusion. It was unattractive. And those things were also said in the meeting. The standard that the HDC is supposed to be applying, which makes sure that it is not making arbitrary decisions, is that it's not making subjective aesthetic decisions about historic structures. The structure was either there in eighteen eighty-eight. It's either indicative of a pattern of development from the early summer colony, or it's not. And that decision can be based on evidence. I want you to make sure you understand that what the applicant said was not that the building was not historic. And again, I will quote accurately from Mr. Welch, who said, "We decided the historic portion of the building should persist, and the nonhistoric portion of the building should could be allowed to be demolished." That was the basis of their decision. But they did not provide evidence that the bit that was demolished was nonhistoric. In fact, they ignored what a minimally qualified um person would be able to recognize, which was evidence that the building was historic. So if their intention was to save the historic building, they should have reopened the discussion of the evidence and allowed testimony and people with experience to share their opinions, their professional opinions, their accredited opinions, and they did not do that. So the HDC allowed the historic portions of the building to be demolished when their intention was to allow the nonhistoric portions of the building to be demolished, and I think we've shown that, that that they ignored the evidence and that they made it an arbitrary decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any other public comments?
Madam Chair, I would like to take up a few things very briefly.
Oh, oh, okay.
Um.
Please just try not to re- repeat the same.
I I will try not, I will try not to belabor any points. Uh, I I understand. I can't, I can't see you as well as the vice chair could, but I understand you've been uh sitting for quite some time. So uh as as Ms. Ray Port said, um, the HDC made a determination about which elements of the building were historic for the reasons that uh Mr. Pfeiffer laid out uh and based on the evidence that the HDC could have taken into consideration and didn't. They erred. We are happy to go back over that in response to select board members' questions, but I won't belabor it here. I was very interested to hear Ms. Martinez uh say that the HDC could have dismissed the claim about the claim that there was a constructive grant of the application, uh, because that is our position as well. And our position is that the HDC's reconsideration vote, its decision, it's it's adverse reconsideration vote that the vice chair cited, its decision not to uh take up the additional information that was presented by Ms. Rayport and others um was all heavily informed by the threat of a constructive grant for a complete demolition hanging over the HDC's heads. If the H if uh the HDC's position as laid out in its letter and read off by Ms. Martinez tonight is that yes, in fact, they could have dismissed the threat of constructive grant. Uh, that's, I think that's very persuasive evidence that uh the HDC had the opportunity to reopen the record, review more information, uh, take a meaningful reconsideration vote and otherwise handle this process differently. Um, the vice chair seems to be making the argument that because portions of this building were rehabilitated or refurbished, uh, it that somehow eroded the historic value. But as uh Mr. Pfeiffer pointed out, many many, many buildings must be refurbished in order to be maintained. And in fact, in the trial court decision in the uh in the Montgomery case, the court actually expressly found, and the the court expressly found that a building that was not of historic vintage nonetheless contributed to the historic district uh by virtue of workmanship, context, dimensions, and so forth. Um, two more very brief points. Uh, the vice chair uh, the vice chair said that for, you know, we were, we were, we introduced the word forensic and that Commissioner Coombs brought that up. Uh, I don't think that's reflected in minutes, and my understanding was that the vice chair was not prepared to talk about anything about the minutes, but uh as long as we're going there, I will point out. And I, it would take me a minute, but I can find this in the video of that meeting, that forensic was Mr. Paul's word. And the overall request, which which I think we all, which I think we all understand, was for the applicant to come back with more detailed information substantiating uh their claims of the age of different building elements. And for the reason that Mr. Pfeiffer uh laid out. And for the reason that Mr. Pfeiffer, uh, laid out, when they got that information, they misused it. Um, finally, I would just like to reiterate that I, that, uh, we would like to be able to take up the issue of Mr. Paul's participation. I, I don't think it's, uh, fair that the, that Ms. Martinez was able to provide rebuttal on that issue, uh, based on representations from the HDC and a, uh, State Ethics Commission investigation that I have never, that I've never seen documented, uh, without interruption from the chair, uh, because apparently, without interruption from the chair, I think the matter is either in scope or out of scope. Our position is that it's in scope. Apparently it's the HDC's position as well, and I'd like to be able to very quickly present, uh, that, present that information. That's all from me, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I, I think we understand your concern about the, um, the chair's participation. And, um, Brian Pfeiffer as a rebut, rebuttal.
Yes, if I may, Madam Chair, I just would like to, to comment on two things. May I proceed?
Yes, just pl- please keep it in regard to the arbitrary-
I'll be brief. I'll be brief, thank you. Um, there are two things. I, I believe that Mr. Welch has misunderstood what is meant by an intrusion. I have never known of any, um, intrusion, these terms come from the National Register of Historic Places. Intrusions are generally confined to things such as the oil tanks downtown in Nantucket or shopping mall planted in the middle of a Victor, District of Victorian houses. They are modern intrusions. The National Register and other groups do not get involved in judging buildings from the period of, of the significance as intrusions. That's a misunderstanding. And then secondly, I would just comment briefly on, on Ms. Martinez's, um, statements. She seems to equate the number of hearings with the quality of the decision. All the hearings are based on the same faulty information. There's no basis ever presented. There's no basis in architectural history to believe the section identified as the supposed oldest part of the building is in fact that. It, it has no architectural sense to it. So it doesn't matter whether one meets one or five hundred times. If the information is flawed, the decision is still not a good decision. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Um, shall I hear from others or Steven, did you wanna?
I'm sorry, very briefly, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to address this constructive, um, what is it? What's the legal term?
Constructive grant.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I shut that down in the meeting based upon various factors that were being, uh, reviewed. And that we didn't take, I just want to clarify in relation to that. The, I, a construct, the threat of a constructive grant was not the reason we didn't take up having the appellant read us her letter and have an opportunity to discuss it. We individually received that on two occasions over the course of three weeks via email through staff, so no open meeting law. And at the motion, at the time of the vote where we were going to vote whether to rescind or move forward, we did not rescind, which was a statement of the, to the fact that we did not feel that, that substantive, substantive information had been provided. With the matter of intrusiveness, uh, I may be wrong, but I'm pretty certain that's actually a term that I picked up out of building with Nantucket in mind, not the national standard. Obviously, an intrusive element in an architectural character and setting is going to be a modern conventional thing like, for instance, a wind turbine or an oil tank. So I think, um, I appreciate, uh, the consultant weighing in. Um, the consultant who actually, by the way, has worked for the appellant on other jobs. We're not going to get into ethics on them. Thank you.
I'll take public comment now. Just state your name.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Rick Bodett, uh, for the owner of Nine Sherborne Way. You probably won't believe this at the end of what I have to say, but I am going to shorten what I was gonna say. I've, I've never sent, felt such empathy for, uh, the select board. Uh, but given that this is an appeal and that we might be in court in the near future, um, I do feel it's necessary to make a number of comments, so. Uh, you know, th- this appellant wants to, uh, present this as an indictment of the process of the HDC, of the Chair of the HDC. Um, and the reality here is that the process was sound. We made two applications to the HDC over the course of two years, was heard, I, I don't know how many times, eight to twelve, eight to ten times maybe. And, uh, over the course of those, those hearings, Ms. Rayport, this was such an important house that Ms. Rayport showed up zero times. We were all there. She was not. The Nantucket Fund or the Nantucket Real Fund uh, was not there either. And in fact, it didn't exist at the time the decision was made by the HDC. It didn't exist at the time the house was demolished. Uh, it was created after the fact. And so for that fact itself, uh, I think that the appellant has a real issue with standing. And I, I'm aware that the select board does not typically decide standing. Um, but again, because it's an appeal, I think it's a relevant point.
Um, you know, and, and agree- Let's just try to keep it away from standing. I think-
Well, I would just say that they-
Accepted standing for these proceedings.
Thank you. And I just would say that they do not have standing moving forward. I, I would also, uh, suggest to you that, that, that this is technically moot. The house does not exist anymore. And, uh, I take issue with the idea that we demolished the house in an effort to moot their appeal. Uh, they appealed, I think, on the afternoon of the twelfth of July. The house was demolished. Toscana was scheduled to be there at eight AM the next day. Uh, everybody in this room knows you don't get Toscana to show up on twelve hours notice. So, um, we received a building permit on the seventh of July. That was a Friday. We began demolition on the tenth, that Monday. We separated the historic part from the nonhistoric part, began demolishing the house in the interior. We actually removed some elements that were, uh, that the prior owner wanted us to save for them. The prior owner knew and supported our demolition despite her letter to you. Uh, and so, you know, the idea that we intentionally demolished the house to moot their appeal is silly. Uh, it, it happened the day before, uh, the house was demolished and the house was demolished finally in about an hour. So, um, uh, you know, we, we demolished the house because my client did not want to see it. Okay. Um, and that's the only reason. Uh, and, and I also want to address the idea that there's a remedy of making us rebuild. That's inaccurate. Okay, Mr. Colemaners, uh, cited the statute, sections ten and section three. I think section ten states that if you want to do something in a historic district, you have to get permission. If you want to build something, need permission. If, uh, you want to tear something down, the same applies. Section thirteen gives the Superior Court jurisdiction and says, properly quoted by Mr. Comers, if you do something in violation of the act, they can make you build it again. If you do something in violation of the act by building something you weren't allowed to build, they can make you tear it down. But that's not what happened here. We specifically demolished something that we had permission to demolish. We had HDC approval and a building permit. So, uh, there, there is no remedy. It, it is moot. There is no remedy that the HDC or a court in fashion that will allow this house to be built again. And so just, uh, and I'll, I'll finish by talking about substantive part of this appeal, which is whether the HDC acted arbitrarily or capriciously. O- over the course, again, of nearly two years, we had two different applications in front of the board to demolish this house. Okay. Like I said, eight to twelve hearings. Each time the preservation planner, Holly Backus, voiced concerns about demolishing this house every, at every hearing. H-SAB, when they existed and when they didn't exist, uh, through Mickey Roland, also questioned whether this house should be demolished. We presented a significant amount of information at both hearings. The second hearing, it, it's true. We submitted vastly the similar evidence. But we, we did a three D image of the entire house, submitted a number of photos, went under the house into the rafters. And we feel we proved conclusively that the part that was demolished was built far after nineteen twenty-three, when we know there was a house there. But the real question and the real presentation to the HDC from our standpoint was, it's not the same house. Just because it's on a sandboard map doesn't mean it's the same house there today. And had been largely rebuilt in the seventies. Um, and that's what we proved to the HDC. That's what we presented to the HDC. And I do want to just mention quickly, uh, why we had two applications. We did submit an application to demolish the whole house. Okay, we had a number of hearings. And at the very last hearing, I think it was Val Oliver who mentioned, geez, you know, there's, and I'm paraphrasing, there, there's something, uh, you know, there, there's certainly a part of this house that's old. And there must be somebody who wants to take it. And so after that hearing, we continued and after that hearing, we withdrew. Joe Taupin was able to find someone, Marty McGowan, who was going to take this historic portion of the house and bring it to Pumpkin Palm Farm. So that was the subject of our second application. It was to demolish the nonhistoric part that we felt we had proven was not historic. And to move off the remaining portion. Again, we had a number of hearings before the HDC. We feel we proved it again. And at the last hearing on March twenty-eighth, I think it was, again, we felt like Val was sort of on the fence. And, uh, Joe suggested to the board, how about this? We keep this historic structure on site and we don't bring it to Pumpkin Palm Farm. That is what got us over the goal line on dep- demolishing this house. Okay? And, uh, and that is what the board voted four to one to approve. So, uh, I just want, and, and I'm closing here. So I just want to remind the board of the standard before you. It's arbitrary, capricious, and that's a really high standard, folks. There are thousands of cases in Massachusetts interpreting arbitrary and capricious. And among other things, two things come out of those cases in every single decision. The first is that you have to give deference to the HDC's decision. Why? Because they're there every Tuesday and Thursday night. They know this stuff. Okay? Those cases also say that you cannot substitute your judgment for the HDC. And what that means is, if you look at everything the HDC looked at, you look at the whole record and you decide that in your opinion, you might have voted against the demolition. That's not enough, folks. You have to find that the HDC acted arbitrarily, that they didn't consider the, the evidence that was presented, that they just, hey, the sky is blue today. I think we'll let a, a house be demolished. And that's not what happened here, folks. There were a number of hearings. They heard all the evidence. They heard opposition to the demolition. And they decided anyway to allow the demolition. Okay, and I don't look at this as a situation where the HDC failed in their process. I, I truthfully look at this scenario as a system that worked. You know, it didn't make my client happy to keep that small structure on site. But the reality is that the HDC process worked. They did their job. They diligently looked at it. And they didn't want us to remove that small structure and we agreed to keep it there. And so that's it, folks. The, the, the system worked. There's no impropriety despite what, uh, what the appellant has said. And, uh, we think you should uphold the HDC because they're the ones that went through this diligent process and they made the decision. So, that's it. I can answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. I have one more hand raised. Pam Merriman online. And then I'm going to, unless the board has questions, I'm going to close the public hearing. Pam Merriman.
Hold on. Did I come through yet?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good. My name is Rich Merriman and I'm a founding member of Keep Nantucket Real and Nantucket Real Fund. I've been a summer resident of Nantucket my entire life. My parents treasured Nantucket for its history and my mother served on the NHA board and initiated the Nantucket Historical Association's Historic House Marker Program. I myself am a former president of Nantucket Preservation Trust, member of the Wisconsin Trust and the Wisconsin Union Chapel. Over the years, I've been the fortunate steward of an Underhill College in Wisconsin Cottage in Wisconsin and more than one historic home in town, both of which I've restored and maintained in a tradition of preservation. Despite great care, I personally experienced the loss of an historic structure. Our family house, built in seventeen fifty on India Street, was undergoing a complete historic renovation in the nineteen seventies when it burned to the ground due to, due to the careless disposal of a cigarette. Last year, Nantucket lost the Veranda House in the same way. These losses come from careless accidents. But I've also taken comfort that we have the Historic District Commission to make sure people could not intentionally tear down historic homes or remodel them to oblivion. Taking care of historic properties is necessary for future generations and for tourism and the economy of Nantucket. What we're talking about tonight is the HDC playing with fire. Nantucket is becoming spoiled by careless, short-term, shortsighted decisions. The HDC should guard against carelessness. When people come forward with information about a historic tru- structure, the HGC should want to hear that information. That is not what happened in the case of Nine Sherborne Way. I think the problem is the leadership of the HDC. The chair's client would get a water view if this house went away. The vice chair works for the building department. It's a building inspector. You might think these are small issues or you might think they're large issues. But there's no question in this case, with this building, they were issues. We've always experienced that when we take care of-
I'm gonna stop, stop you there. Um, you're, you're talking about, um, elected officials and, um, and we're here reviewing whether they behaved in an arbitrary and capricious manner. So if you could just try to keep it to that and not disparage anyone's-
My last sentence is-
Character or interest.
Take care of Nantucket. Remand this decision back to the HDC for more careful consideration.
Thank, thank you. Um, Stephen, I'll, I'll take one final comment.
Two things. Um, as you know, Madam Chair, you were probably, I believe here, um, my role as a building official has nothing to do with the HDC, um, as determined appropriate by the State Ethics Commission and, um, the select board. So I just want to make that clear. The other item is, I just wanted to briefly say, intrusion as defined in the building with the Nantucket in mind is, uh, a structure which detracts from a historic district's significance because of its incompatibility with the district's sense of time, place and historic development. It was simply pointing out the rocket ship did not fit in with the other structures that were the sense of time, place and historic integrity. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, very briefly.
Final comment.
On mootness, uh, we've said our piece. I just want to add that the, uh, that attorney but its position um, incentivizes, uh, rapid demolition. And I think the select board and the HDC should be quite concerned about that. I did go back to the Montgomery case, uh, the, which says that the irregularities in proceedings noted by the trial judge, the chair's ex parte communications, which was cheerleading for one party, uh, helping that party through the process, her choice of one associate commissioner over another to participate in the decision and the chosen associate commissioner's switch and vote, raise the specter that the commission may have considered improper factors or acted for reasons outside of its mandate. Um, these, these questions of conduct that ra- that raise eyebrows, I don't want to get into the state ethics, state ethics law conduct that just raises eyebrows, um, is well within your remit. Finally, uh, Ms. Martinez acknowledged, and this was in the HDC's letter as well, that the HDC had it wrong in either twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. Um, so I would just ask the select board to consider based on the procedural irregularities we've highlighted and the evidence we have presented of how the HDC misused the information that was in front of it in twenty twenty-three and the information that it refused to hear in twenty twenty-three, uh, whether the HDC, it is more, whether it is more likely the HDC got it wrong in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Um, and unless the board has any direct questions for anyone, I'm going to close the public hearing. We can talk to town council.
Yeah, but we may-
Yeah, but we may have questions. Yeah, there's, I may have questions. To either side of this as we move forward, if we discuss, and I would like to.
Well, then, why don't we start board discussion? I, I was, I had said that twice.
Well, then should we have, should I have interrupted during? Various people's.
No, no, I'm not talking about you.
I know, but if we close it and I, can I ask people questions?
Yes, that's why I'm saying before I finally close it, but I wasn't going to take any, any new comments. Unless it's a board question. Yeah.
We, if we have a question, we can still ask it once you close.
Is that, is that acceptable? It's nine twenty.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to be sure we can.
Right, but I had already said I wasn't taking anymore. If that's, I mean, if you have a question of that person, that's fine, but it's someone who hasn't spoken and we've been at this for a long time. And I'm not trying to shut people down, but at some point we have to. Finish the, finish this, but I want, I want to hear from the board what questions they have to help deliberate.
Madam Chair, I, one question maybe to, uh, Ms. Martinez. I was just wondering, I heard it briefly go by. She mentioned it about staff's opinion of this and, uh. I'm just looking at Holly's beautiful green handwriting. It's sometimes difficult to read it. Uh, for the first application, the second. What was staff's recommendation again?
Um, I believe, as Merle does on, I believe Holly Bakus is on as well.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Um, I think, as Merle, I think the question's actually on what Holly's recommendation was, that it was hard to.
Okay, sorry, Madam Chair.
If she's okay to answer it.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here. Thank you. Um, I. So, and I apologize for my scribble. Um, but this is how I handle, uh, with the amount of applications that are before the commission, my staff comments. I think that my record's fairly clear that, um, I felt that this was a contributing structure.
Thank you.
Did you hear? Okay. Other board members? Okay, while, while you're all thinking, um. There, there is one hand still raised. Can I take a very brief comment just to make sure that it's not something we? Yeah, yeah, no, go ahead and let her in, but it, it needs to be extremely brief and in regard to whether this was an arbitrary and capricious decision. Please.
Go ahead, Clement.
Yeah, hi, this is Clement Durkies. I'm a member of the. Nantucket Historical Commission and I've been watching this, um, quite closely, um. It's, it's quite astonishing, I'm sorry to say, but, and I don't really have any obvious comments except that, um. I, it seems to me that the. H D C was arbitrary and capricious and, um. I hate to see that historic structures are being demolished. Uh, so. I think that's fine and I'm sorry that this has gone on so long, but it's an extremely important decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just, I was looking for any new information.
No, no new information. Sorry.
That's okay. Um, board questions?
I, I guess I have a question for H D C. One of the, uh. You know, Holly, Holly said it was, you know, recommended multiple times. It was, it was a contributing structure. Contributing structure should not be demolished. You know, that's clear in our, in, in these rules. Uh, you guys made a determination. So, and you, and Steve, Steve talked about, uh. Grading it and you how you graded it, that it wasn't, that it was intrusive. Uh, how did you grade it? Is that in writing? How did you determine to override? The, you know, preservation recommendation?
Okay, good question. Great question.
Ray, Ray Poole for the record.
Oh, sorry. Ray Poole, Chairman of the H D C.
We have radio, so.
Thank you.
We have to.
Okay, contributing officially now means. Any building, any building built prior to nineteen seventy-five on Nantucket. That includes all of the condos out in Maticet. It includes. Any building that was built prior to nineteen seventy-five. That's contributing. Okay? That's not the standard. The stat, next in line is individually significant. And those are fairly obvious. You know, the three bricks individually significant. Now, there's a higher standard yet again, which is called protected. And protected is basically this building is so important. And I think the bricks would qualify in this case. This building is so important. That it can't be touched. Nothing can be done to this building. No demolition of any kind. So. Yep. Uh, protected. So. Building was contributing. Indeed. Absolutely. Nobody disagrees that it was built prior to nineteen seventy-five. Um. Was it protected? No. The board concluded that it did not meet the standard to be protected. That's, so, no, there was, you, you mentioned the other word about intrusive. Intrusive is not a standard. Intrusive is just, uh, a label that was applied by Stephen at a meeting. And I think he explained himself pretty well in terms of.
We've got the, it here.
Yeah.
Standards for approval. The commission shall not grant approval requests for demolition. Of a protected structure or any portion thereof unless the commission determines upon clear and convincing evidence. That one of the following circumstances applies. The structure is not a significant structure. You're saying it's not significant? Or the structure is a protected structure only by reason of its presence within the historic district and is non-contributing to the district.
Correct.
So you're picking which, you're pick, which one are you doing A or B?
B.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
I think that's.
Well, I probably have more, but it'll take a minute. I'm sorry.
Does any?
No, I know.
Anyone else have questions?
Like, my question for the other side is what's the point of remanding? It's gone already. You know, what are we going to learn if we, if we remand, especially if we're remanding to a group that is, that at least. Half are, uh. Antagonistic to a remand in a way, antagonistic to your intrusion into their process. Well, why would we do that?
Um, I can try to answer that, Matt. Um, so, uh. We.
Hillary Rayport again for the record, just for the radio.
What we presented was we, we were exploring, yeah, sure. Do you guys hear me? Can everybody hear me? Um, so. What we are exploring in this hearing is the finding that the H D C had, which was that. The building was contributing and that a large portion of the building had be, been reconstructed in nineteen seventy. And that the whole roof had been reconstructed and was new. And their finding was that the new portion could be demolished. And we presented evidence in this hearing that. They made that decision without proper evidence and without an understanding of the photos that they looked at. Um, and we are asking for a remand because it's dangerous to our historic commission. To allow buildings that are likely to be historic. I mean, we presented enough smoke, you know, we. We're hearing hooves. Are they zebras? No, they're probably horses. I mean, it's probably the case that this is a historic building. And so the remand will give the chance for that discussion that Mr. Poole just mentioned to happen. I would love to have the opportunity to discuss with this commission, this historic district commission, if this is a protected structure. Is it significant? Does it rise to the status of not being allowed to be demolished? I think that would be a really interesting discussion to have. I think it would be really value for our community and it's what I went back to school for. I would love to have that discussion. But instead, what happened was the H D C said the building is contributing. We believe our preservation planner. The building has old parts. Let's save the old parts. Let's knock down the new parts. And then they decided what was old and what was new. Based on no evidence and wrongly interpreted and understood evidence. So the power of the remand is to, one, correct the process. And take away, have folks recuse who have conflicts with large projects next door. And to discuss this important question of what is valuable to save based on actual evidence. If we find that the building was wrongly demolished and should have been protected, there should be a remedy. We have been stolen, the opportunity to enjoy this structure has been stolen. It has been completely scanned. It could be rebuilt. It would not be old, but the pattern of development, the wide gambrel, certain aspects that are important to the district could be recreated. And I'd like to have the opportunity to have that happen. Does that answer your question?
That's, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Are there any other board questions? I, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Um, could I have a motion to that effect?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Um, does the board have questions for counsel or discussion amongst ourselves? Brooke?
I, I'm curious, um, it, um, Mr. Riley, if you could weigh in on the question of the remedy that has been suggested of rebuild versus what Mr. Bodett told us?
Um. Well. I mean, I, I think this goes to this question of, of mootness, which I know has been argued on both sides. Um. You know, I, I think it's a fair point that the H D C, uh, is given. Authority to, you know, come up with different remedies rather than just saying yes or no to an application. But, um. My own opinion is that, uh. That the authority to, you know, let's say order something to be rebuilt or even a. Superior court, if it got to that, you know, whether a court would do that. Uh, would certainly apply if someone either just. Um, you know, raised a building without even asking for permission. Or if they came before the H D C and said, we would like to do X to this building. And that's approved and they go out and do X, X, Y, Z, or maybe they tear the whole thing down. Um, certainly that, you know, kind of. Either one of those sort of, you know, cries out and makes an equitable argument for, well, something, something more than just, uh, you know, uh. You shouldn't have done that, uh, might apply, but it was, you know, it was relevant to me, uh, to see, even though. The certificate of appropriateness wasn't filed on time, which, you know, may have led to some of these issues. Um. That, uh. The owner. Had had a certificate of appropriateness. And the building permit. So it's not, it's not in that same, to me anyway, it's not in that same realm of. You did this in violation of the H D C Act. Uh, they at least tried to. Do what they were supposed to do. They filed applications. They had hearings. They got a decision. And acted, you know, under at least what that decision said. Now, whether, whether this board might find that that decision has problems. Was it arbitrary, capricious? I mean, that's for the board to decide. Um, but I do think, uh, it seems, seems to me anyway, that a, a rebuilding. Kind of remedy, if the H D C was even inclined to do that on remand, uh, would be sort of a difficult one under these facts.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is my sense of this. I can't imagine that anyone is going to, uh. Ask for, you know, ask for a rebuild. I do think that there's lessons to be learned. I've been through a couple of these where. You know, things were torn down, sort of one oh six main that was torn down and probably shouldn't have been. Uh, and so, you know, and I would like to think that we're getting better, but I'm not sure that we are at. Protecting things and documenting it. I, so I, I would like to think if we remanded it would be. Uh, to examine and approve the process and have everybody, because one of the things I do note, did notice noting there. There was confusion. There's clear confusion in the minutes between various members and they even, it's even sounds like. They thought they voted on something different than they voted on. And so, so I think that it wasn't as clear as either side sort of, you know, makes it, makes it believe. I think, I think. You know, I, I, I think Diane had some concerns and brought them up multiple times and felt. And didn't get any, and maybe she didn't get anywhere, but I think that she thought they hadn't voted for what they voted for. So, so I don't know that the process was great and I would hate to think that this. You know, anyway, I, I, I just, I, I feel. Uh, yeah, I, I would like, I would personally, I would like to see it remanded to have in this, the public process. Try to improve it for the future.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I think that. Yeah, it says it was quite a package to go through. But what really bothers me about this whole process is the personal. Potential attacks or innuendos that came about through all this discussion from, uh. I think almost everyone involved. I think that's just not acceptable. Period. I, I tend to look at the procedures. I looked at, uh, this, Mr. Pfeiffer's testimony. Uh. I'm obs, I don't think the procedures went particularly well. How it really happened. Unfortunately, I did not sit through all the tapes I wished I'd had. Uh, because the minutes, you know, minutes are minutes. It's hard to understand those. I'm a little upset that. At the, uh, sort of the end, uh, there was other information that was not. Uh, really reviewed officially by the H D C. Whether that was correct or not correct, it just bothers me. It was not done, particularly with something like a demolition. It's not like what color paint you're going to put your house on. This is taking a building down. So I, I think the H D C should have, uh, should have looked at that more. So, um, I certainly think rebuilding the structure is just ridiculous.
Are there any further questions or comments? I'm trying to, I, I'm not sure where the, where the board is on this. Um, I, I mean, I know we, we had another application not that long ago. Where. I mean, it, it was, it comes at a moot point when the building's already gone. And I mean, it was, I did drive up there and, um. The pe, the piece that was preserved is, is there and it's watertight and reshen gold on one side and everything. Um.
If I, I may say one more thing, Madam Chair. I mean, I, I'm kind of debating with myself right now. Because I certainly, uh. I like the H D C to be independent. And it upsets me that we have to potentially remand or not remand. Uh, I'm upset to the fact that this is the second time we've dealt with a demolition in the last year. Which means, uh. Something is maybe not going correctly, or perhaps we're not communicating correctly. Uh, maybe. Everyone wants the same thing, but we're just not talking to each other correctly. Maybe that's the problem. So I would, I want to hear the rest of my fellow board members on this.
Brooke? So I think, I think for me. An imperfect process. And arbitrary and capricious are perhaps two different things. I, I, it's, it's to, to. At what point do we cross the threshold from? Um, an imperfect process to arbitrary and capricious. Um, and maybe town council could help with that. Um, and I also. Know there's a, there's a full review of H D C policies and procedures that's underway now. So there is. Already some work being done on. Strengthening procedures and how things happen at the H D C. So I'm not sure a remand of this. Would necessarily accomplish that. It's already being done. So. Um, anyway, I guess, I guess the question is at what point do we cross the threshold to arbitrary and capricious from? Yeah.
Um, I mean, regardless of whether I agree with the final decision, I think that there was a clear. Um, chain of deliberation. chain of deliberation as spoken to tonight by the board members. And, you know, also, it wa, this wasn't a three-two split vote either. So may, maybe there was confusion amongst the board, but it also, this is a five-member elected board, elected by the community with varying degrees of experience and qualifications and so forth. And I, I think that the, getting, but getting to the arbitrary and capricious part is that's a really hard standard. If they went, they went through what I would call a normal HDC process of a board that spends many hours reviewing every exterior architectural change on the entire island. And maybe that is where certain procedures could be changed in the future. And, I mean, there, there was clear reasoning about contributing versus protected versus individually significant. And at, at the end of it, the structure was already permitted and has been. The permit's been exercised to be taken down. But regardless, I don't think the review process was arbitrary and capricious, maybe flawed, but not arbitrary and capricious.
Well, if, if you don't listen to your preservation planner, or if you, you know, take the applicant's information, but you don't, you know, you don't have a Brian Pfeiffer or someone else countering that, then I, you know, I could make an argument that that is, that could become arbitrary. And, and in this case, I think it, it has slipped into that. And I think, you know, you're saying everyone wants the same thing. I don't think everyone does want the same thing.
I would like to think.
I mean, I don't think that is the case. I think there, that the HDC is under a ton of pressure. You know, and I think the architects are under a ton of pressure from their clients. I think the HDC is under a ton of pressure from, you know, from the, the constant barrage. And, and I think that we are, you know, my own opinion is that we are you know, sort of not as diligent as we used to be. Is it because we don't have an HDC head? I don't know. It's part of it. You know, which, and we're working on all that. But I think it's unfortunate that we're where we are. You know, Brian, I think Brian Pfeiffer, I've done some renovation and exactly what he's talking about. You know, I've seen with my own eyes and I walked up and looked at this building with my, I took the dogs for a walk and saw what he's talking about. So you know. So I believe that there is, you know, there is an opportunity for us to find that if we would like.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If, the, this is a tough one, of course. If what's before us is arbitrary and capricious, that's a pretty high standard for us to we are checking balance on the process. And so for us to find that standard should be, should be a high bar. For us to replace the deliberations or to, to send back the deliberations of an elected body. And I, regardless of our opinions, as Mr. Bodett said, said, regardless of our opinions on the process and maybe to Brooke and, and Dawn's and everybody's points about the HDC process being reevaluated, of, of, of course, and that, that should be happening. But I, again, I think we should focus on whether it's arbitrary and capricious, if that's what's before us.
Does anyone want to make a motion on which direction we're going here?
I'll make a motion to send this back to the HDC. To remand.
I'll second.
Is there further discussion on that?
We do this every time. May I ask town council for a definition of arbitrary and capricious for us before we?
Yes.
Madam Chair. I mean, it's difficult to have a short and sweet take on that. But I think if, if you think about especially the word arbitrary, it implies that, you know, just using the HDC as, as the example, a lot of information was presented to us and it made a decision that, you know, simply didn't square with the evidence they were given. Made the decision, really didn't have a, a basis in fact, or at least a reasonable basis in, in what they were looking at. And so I think that, and you know, capricious is almost implies they didn't, they weren't supposed to be doing seriously enough, or what was presented to them seriously enough. So, you know, I do agree that as a, as a matter of law, it is a very high bar. This board can, can make that call. But I, I'd say that is sort of what you would be looking at is did the evidence, you know, did all the materials, applications, testimony, et cetera, that the HDC received? Was their decision ultimately just kind of way out and left field compared to what, you know, what you would think it should have been?
Thank, thank you. So that, that's the standard. Shall we go to a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
That's, I, I'm a no as well. I, I, I don't think that we can support that their decision was, was arbitrary and capricious. Is there an alternate motion?
The opposite would be uphold the HDC's decision.
Motion to uphold the HDC's decision.
Second.
Can I just rephrase that? Motion to deny the appeal and uphold the HDC decision?
Yes, thank, thank you, Erica.
Yep.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in favor. Three to two. We'll prepare a written decision.
Madam Chair, members of the Senate, thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Have we ever had a minority report on these? Because we, we prepare the decision in favor of the, you know, if, if we haven't, is it something we could be allowed to have? If, you know, is that something from a legal perspective? Is this, if this is going to end up in court, is that something that, you know, maybe we don't want to do it as a town because we're putting ourselves at jeopardy, but if I have just a question.
Is that a question for counsel?
Yeah, that's a good one, Brian, I guess.
Brian?
I think I would be I think, I think my response would be if this hasn't been the practice before and it's not in your, you know, I know you have a sort of a procedures of, of how you handle these. You know, the, perhaps you could discuss whether to make this sort of a, a formal part of, of your decisions here, but I, I I wouldn't recommend it doing here if it's never been done before.
Okay.
It would, I, I don't know what it would do on an appeal. But you know, at, at the end of the day, this is a three to two vote to deny the appeal and that's really what, you know, that's the decision of this board.
And that sends, that sends a bit of a message itself. If it was five oh, that would be different. But okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously.